We'll call to be entered at seven oh four. Selecting meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. All right. Wait for Mary to get.
Running, running, running.
You don't have your pile.
Oh, holy cow.
I thought it was gonna be a short meeting.
Oh, no.
No, I saw the agenda, but.
Sorry about that.
No power. All right, thank you.
I'll take these.
All right. I know the first item was approval of minutes, but I have to say I haven't had a chance to read them yet.
No, I didn't read them either.
Yeah, so I think we'll put that off to the next.
Joe.
Next meeting.
Reading.
Okay. The next item that we have is a request from the Assistant Town Clerk about using the reverse nine one one system to automate the process of those who still have to license their dogs.
I didn't think we had a reverse nine one one.
The chief says there is one and that he suggested it to Eloise and that there's about three hundred delinquent dog licenses outstanding. Whether they're all alive or not, don't know, but at least they can put those three hundred telephone numbers in and hit them all at one time. Versus Eloise was asking originally could dispatchers make these calls? It'd be three hundred calls.
I have a problem with reverse nine one one.
Nope.
I'd take a motion to approve the use of the reverse, of the reverse nine one one to remind dog owners who have not yet licensed their dogs to come in and get the license.
My second, I mean, so move.
Okay, I second just discussion. Yeah, what is, how does reverse one one, nine one one, I've never heard of it.
It's a system.
Well, I've heard of it.
Oh, it's a system by which we can make automated calls to the landlines only.
No, no. It depends on the, the system that he is gonna get July first will do cell phones and do landlines and can do it in an area, specific area. This one, I think, is the old Worcester County one.
So that would be.
So nine one one is the emergency number to call.
Yeah, and this, this is a situation in which you can program an automated call to go out to a list of numbers.
Oh, okay.
Simultaneously.
Simultaneously. It gives them a recorded message. You know, I mean, it's intended.
So when kids have school canceled in town, the superintendent records a message and it calls all the households at the same time. So everyone hears at the same time that there's no school.
Or if you had an emergency or road closing in a, you know, part of town, you could use it for that. And it appears as though we could use it to remind dog owners if we had so voted. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna have you bark, but. Aye. All righty. All right. The next item is a technical assistance application.
That comes from Jeanne Servel who talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And that was for, I think, up to fifteen thousand, right? Because ten's the limit and they said there was five thousand left on the table before, so it'd be fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, and this is to deal with the forty B development called Green Acres. Mark Rhodes, the proponent. So this is really just an application for state funds to support the review of that. I would take a motion to approve that request.
I would so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And this just requires the signature of the chief of the officials.
Today is the sixteenth.
Uh, ten thousand dollars. And only, only one copy is required?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all she gave me.
No, that's right, I just, I didn't see another one, but. We have here a thank you note to Margaret Bergen for her, thanking her for her twenty years, one years of service. Although I would disclose she's my mother-in-law, I'd like to vote on this if I might.
You can vote on that.
So I would take a motion to issue a letter of thanks for twenty-one years of service as a member of the Berlin Council of Aging.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is she on anything now?
She's still doing Wheels on Wheels, she said.
Yeah, so she does the volunteer stuff. Well, she turns ninety, yeah?
Yeah.
And. We have a note here. You want to explain this? It's a meeting on February twentieth. We voted to appoint Bridget Boyle.
Oh, that's, the safe February twentieth, oh, I changed the date. Sorry about that, I can change that on the appointment letter. That's just saying that tonight you voted to rec Denny, put forward those two names and you want them both appointed tonight.
Okay, so you'll have to read.
Yes, I will read through that.
You'll have to issue a new.
I'm not sure of both of them, there's two of them.
No, one of them is right.
Yeah, okay. And the cards, Judy.
Yeah, and the cards are correct, so we can go ahead. All right, so we have a request from Chief of the Rescue Squad, Chief Bartlett, to appoint Bridget Boyle and Michelle DeVoe as members of the Rescue Squad through five thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. I take a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I sign the green.
You sign the green. Yeah, I think you signed.
In the letter, actually.
And the letter.
If you can read the wrong one, I'll fix it after you read it.
It's the, no, that's the right one.
Yeah.
So you're gonna sign that and we'll put it in here. And that's the wrong one.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. That's the right one.
Okay.
Judy, where do you go buy a Starbucks on the way in here?
It's a reusable cup.
Oh. Could use on my cell.
What are you looking for?
Uh, well, this, item six, Mary says annual appointments.
Yes, I have them.
They're over there. Have we given you a little exercise tonight?
Yeah, it's good.
Back and forth?
It's all good, it's cold in there, so it keeps you, keeps you warm.
Okay. All right, we have before us a number of annual appointments. Would you like me to read them?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't mind, I don't mind, yeah. We have an appointment to registrar of voters, Gretchen Ellis, all of these.
Well, let me just ask you this. Are they basically, are there any changes or renewals?
There are, there are no changes.
No changes, okay. Was anybody in today looking for a paper to fill out, looking for an appointment?
No.
Okay. Someone had called me and find out how to go about getting on the, this girl called Miss Lucy Hayes, as a matter of fact. She's been involved in a commission of the steps or, and she said, I told her to come see Mary, but. Well, we have a opening. Do you still want me to read them or give them back?
No, if they're basically the same, I've read the town reports.
They are the same.
Yes.
And we would note that, for instance, we are appointing an interim inspector of wires, I mean, so we're not.
Interim.
Interim, yep. You're still measure of wood and bark?
Very honored.
All right, so.
Is there any conflict between that and your selection?
The, other than that, I don't think so. All right, so does anybody have any questions, comments, whatever on this?
Green cards will follow Judy.
Can I just take a look at it?
Sure.
I'm gonna computerize the green cards, so.
We'll take the seven fifty as soon as we finish this thing.
Who's supposed to pick up dead animals in the road?
Called the measure of wood and bark.
There's been a, a dead, I don't know, raccoon or something, it's kind of beyond.
Dead wild animals, I believe is highway, dead domestic animals is, I believe, the dog box, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I will call the highway.
I can tell the highway.
You can tell the highway, there's one on West Street by Doug Hefner's just before his house, if you're coming into town.
And so what is it?
Hmm, it looked like.
The farts.
Is it?
Yeah.
I thought.
It looked like the farts. Did you ever ride through Pennsylvania, Judy?
A little smushed.
Every two hours, there's a deer on the side.
Oh, yeah.
There were deer, there were deer Sunday night. There was a deer on seventy and a little tiny fawn.
Well, I would, I would accept, there's no further discussion or question. I would not accept a motion to appoint the list submitted to the selectmen this evening.
I so move.
Second.
Further discussion, I'll take, I'll accept a vote on that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think we all three have to sign this. All right. I think we have the Ad hoc Pipeline Committee, so whoever's here for that, come on down. Yeah, you should be.
My husband went today.
Ah, did you stay for this?
Yes.
So you got the mission statement?
Yes.
If you look in the appointment folder, Tom.
Yeah.
Maybe you could read it out.
Yep, why don't we do that? The goals of the Ad hoc Berlin Pipeline Study Committee would be, one, conduct research, in fact, finding efforts to obtain information about the proposed gas pipeline, its past path through Berlin, its effect on landowners and on the town of Berlin as a whole. Two, present gathered information to the Board of Selectmen and other town boards, i.e. Planning Board, Historical Commission, Conservation Commission, both to inform them and to gain their input. And three, hold a public forum to present facts and information available to the public, answer questions, and inform residents of possible options.
And then you want to add to that?
No, it sounds pretty good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was good, yeah.
I'd like to make a suggestion that this be presented to the boards together rather than individually.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't, I'm not opposed to holding a town officers, maybe just, just a general town officers meeting.
Right.
Is that what you had in mind?
Uh, yeah, 'cause I think.
Yeah, that'd be on, yeah, wouldn't hurt to have a town officer meeting anyway.
Right.
Discussing.
Right, so then everyone knows what they're doing. Like last week, I went, Skip Dragon and I went to the Agricultural Commission meeting and they proposed certain things and, you know, we talked about things that could be done.
This is our agricultural commission.
Yes, right, and I think it would be worthwhile to have all the groups together to come up with a plan.
Well, maybe you need a different meeting, just you guys and have the boards come just for this group, because it sounds more like.
Well, actually, you know, typically, it's a good idea to go to each individual board because they will have a different input into this whole project and then have a forum where all of them are together. And there can be, you know, a concrete and unified plan of action. That really makes a lot more sense to do that. And that could be in conjunction with a public forum for all of the public at large to come and hear what, you know, is going on, what we found out, et cetera, et cetera.
So you agree with each other?
Right, but each board will have.
You're gonna do some work first with each board?
Right, each board will have different input.
Town office meeting, sure.
Yeah, it sounds more like having a meeting for, to talk about the gas pipeline with the public, not a town officers meeting necessarily.
Well, we might need both, I mean.
Right, you, you might need both, but you definitely need to speak with each committee because each committee's focus is somewhat different.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
No, I mean, I think you guys have a pretty broad discretion in terms of who you talk to, how you, how you talk to them. I think, you know, we're, we're supportive, one, of a town officers meeting. If you guys feel as you get into it, that's, you know, that's useful to get the boards together. Those are public meetings anyway, so that, you know, the, the public can come.
I just think it would save a lot of time to present it to the different boards at the same time as opposed to, you know, one week you come to conservation, next week you go to planning.
Well, we sort of leave that to you and you guys can come and ask us. If you want, you can make your own appointments with, with the, with the boards. If you want us to call, you know, a, a public meeting of some sort or a town officers meeting. We are no doubt going to have in July or August, you know, a, a general session which Kindred Morgan comes in any, you know, anyway. And obviously, we'll, we'll keep you guys up to speed on the timing and so on of that.
Yeah, and I, and I was thinking, you know, once we get to each board, a public forum in the beginning of July, I think, is doable. You know, because I've been doing a lot of research into what Kindred Morgan is doing and how they keep changing their plans from Monday to the next and their goals from Monday to the next. But underneath all of that, there is a set of, you know, state laws and federal laws that they can't abridge, you know, unless everybody's input. And I think a public forum to inform the whole public as a group and town boards too would be a really good idea. And I was thinking, you know, the July time, timeframe, we could do it, you know, early July. And maybe get somebody from a group who does this sort of thing, you know, which is neophyte of this, to come also and provide input to us.
Well, we, we meet on the twelfth of July, I believe.
July fourteenth is the joint meeting of the Gas Committee.
That's right, yeah.
Well, are, are you planning on going to the Bolton meeting on June twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Yeah, we thought that would be a good spot to hear a lot of questions, hear what other people are doing. There could be other towns there besides us, you know.
Right.
And from along the whole route. Probably will be.
Well, we meet next on the thirtieth. I think you, you have a, you, you know, you have a charge of, per, I presume you guys are all, as far as appointments to this, do we know who is interested in it? Besides yourselves?
I mean, I've got a few names that have said there's some interest. I didn't say will you until I figured out if we were really gonna be happening there. Jim Pratt, Beth Brewer, Matt Ryder, and Louise called me Saturday or Sunday morning, Saturday morning, I guess. So those were four names, and then we thought we'd like to have a name on for maybe, you're on conservation, right?
Right, yeah, so.
So we could get someone from agriculture, maybe like, some extreme cow, extreme.
Still wanna research into this already?
He has.
Yeah. Ordered things from the mass farm, go into our office.
Well, you'll probably get some initial, you know, do your initial fact finding, find out what you want, and come to us anytime. Yeah. Set up a meeting or, you know, if you think it's right, Louise. If you think it's right and still think it's needed in a couple of weeks, let us know and start it up.
Now, are the three of you willing to take an appointment at this point with the idea that then if you talk to other people and submit names on the thirtieth, we can appoint more?
Five to no more than seven people would be.
Yeah, no more than seven.
If you have too many people, it's just.
Yeah, it becomes a public meeting.
We don't have seven, no.
Would you like us to say to the camera, anyone who's interested in joining the Ad hoc Tennessee Gas Pipeline Committee, please contact.
If you want, do you want them to contact you, Marion?
Um, sure.
Contact Marion McLeod at?
Nine seven eight.
Nine seven eight?
Three six eight.
Three six eight?
Eight five five two.
Eight five five two.
Or my email is M A R, M A C S T E R at Comcast dot net.
I can put that up on the web and Facebook if you want.
Sure.
I just don't know if you get a lot of response, if you get flooded with a response or.
Oh, that would be unlikely.
You think?
Depends on my Facebook.
Yeah, I can imagine there would be a law. You know, there, there is a lot of opposition to this line all across the state. You know, and I found out a few things that, I guess I can say now, is they do not have the right to cross conservation land, any agriculturally or conservation restricted land.
Or parkland, yeah.
Or parkland.
Yeah.
They don't have the right to chop a tree down, you know. That, that's all federal law. If they can persuade towns and people to allow them to do this survey work, then, you know, that, that presents a whole different aspect of this project and it can move ahead. But right now, they can't. And then the other thing I found out that really absolutely amazed me.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I understood what you just said. The survey work in and of itself doesn't enable them to do anything.
Right, doesn't enable them to do anything.
Right.
But, you know.
At least that was the understanding that, that we had.
Right, and one of the things I found out that it appeared on one of these obscure websites is that as part of their survey work, they wanted to dig bore holes. Well, that's a whole different facet of this project.
That was included in the letter that Carl Rich from sent me around.
No, and that's consistent with what they said at Representative Non-Ops, that they, they do a general survey and if they, if they feel that bore holes are appropriate in a given place in terms of choosing, absolutely, it may include that.
There's only two reasons you do bore holes, to find water or to find oil or gas. You don't do bore holes to, to know what the soil is because, no, the USGS soil survey maps tell you. They tell you where all the shale is, they tell you what type of soil you're going through, you know.
Well, that, that may be, I, my impression from them is that that was to, you know, determine each depth of soil, you know, type of soil and so on. I don't think they're trying to drill for gas in Berlin.
Oh, no, no, they're not trying to drill for gas in Berlin, no, no. Looking as opposed to drilling.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need to have an official vote to make them an ad hoc committee?
Yes, I would, I would accept a motion to appoint an Ad hoc Pipeline Study Committee with the charge that was just read and with an initial membership of the attendees tonight.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? No, okay. And as we say, if you, if over the next week or so you, you locate some other members, we're happy to.
Jim Miller had expressed an interest in being on the.
Well, yeah, come back to us and let us know. You, you guys, we'll, we'll let you guys be the gatekeeper on that, all right, 'cause you're, you're first on. All right, if there's no other discussion, I would take a vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I do have one question, and this is really down the line. If it was deemed appropriate to send property owners letters, would we be able to do that on the town?
I think we need to discuss that.
I don't agree.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you know, I have enough trouble dealing with reality without discussing alternate realities in the future that we don't know about yet. So the, but let's, you know, I mean, let's, we will keep in touch, you know, every, every time we meet, you're welcome to come in and talk to us. You can, you know, reach us through the selectman's office if you have questions and if something like that comes up, we'll discuss it.
So you're saying you would rather us not initiate contact with property owners or just keep it general?
No, I think she asked if, if it was appropriate to send a general letter and I said I, I think we'd like to discuss that. You know, under the particular circumstances, knowing what the letter is, who it was going to and, and so on.
Yeah, I was just looking forward to it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, and I'm not sure I can see that far.
But talking to the newspapers and things like that and trying to get.
You are who you are, you're the Ad hoc Committee.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can do those things as private citizens.
It is a, it is a, a largely free country, yes.
You don't advocate your liberty by being on this.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On, on the topic of, of those Tennessee gases, asked for July or August dates.
Okay.
And they're putting it on us to come up with dates. Probably steering clear of Monday nights because Monday nights are the worst for them.
Well, give them some Tuesday, Wednesday, Sunday nights.
Do you want me to just come up with?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Want to be here or going to be traveling or available?
The third week of August, I would definitely be.
That's seventeen through twenty-three?
Yes, I would be.
Okay. So give them some Tuesdays and Thursdays, you say?
Tuesdays, days?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, I said Tuesday, yeah, middle, middle week, yeah.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. Wait, you keep saying my name.
I'll just check on availability in school.
Just confirming because.
Imagine the summer, right? No, I mean, sometimes they have basketball games and stuff, so you should check.
Yeah, it's the, it's the week that starts Monday, the eighteenth.
Oh, August, okay.
Of August. Yep.
I'll go like mid-July through mid-August?
Yeah.
Also, Don Lowe said that he was trying to put together that higher level meeting of town representatives for this authority, Walter.
Yes.
And, but Don's going away for a couple of weeks, he was thinking of a July meeting just to have like a high-level meeting. He's touched base with Northborough, I'm sorry, Boylston, but heard nothing from Northborough, which may only have a couple of properties flipped in the end. It doesn't look up, look to be that big.
Okay.
He's trying to get reps and senators and also representative from Nicky Sangas' office to attend that.
Okay.
No date on that.
Okay.
And then also, we do have a partial list from Diane of Kinder Morgan asked her for property cards for a, a list of properties that seem to be the chain. But she knows that for a fact it doesn't include everyone. Would you want us, once we get a date, to reach out to those homeowners to say that there's a public meeting on those?
Well, sorry, which public meeting, this is the?
The one that we're trying to let the company.
The Kinder Morgan one.
Just to say notification of that there's a Berlin meeting.
Wouldn't hurt your public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be announcing.
But we're not gonna, we're not gonna blanket the whole town with the mail or, I was just saying if we could reach out to those, those specific addresses.
Yeah, maybe we can use the reverse nine one one.
Yeah.
That would be good for the whole town, perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
Would you want that?
Sure, I mean, I think if, if we put it on the community bulletin board and so on, and maybe we can get the Lions Club to put something out. But, yeah, I mean, if we're talking, sending a letter to, I don't know, what are we talking about, thirty, forty, forty, forty-five people, maybe?
More like twenty-five that she has names for.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not opposed to that. All right. All right. Okay, we had, nothing else on that then, because we'll move on to seven-thirty? All right, we have...
I did put up on the Facebook page that the Bolton meeting is open to the public at large. I didn't, I would hesitate at first because I didn't want Bolton to get flooded with people, because Berlin residents are not going to be allowed to speak at that. That's only for Bolton residents. But Don Lowe said, we picked a large venue, thinking that we'd have a lot of people from the public there, so...
Mm-hmm, and also, you should check with the school about availability of the...
It are, yeah, definitely will.
Before you give them the dates.
Will do.
I just want to be sure that they're not like garnishing the...
Doing sound barriers.
Jim Four, something like that during a given, so check with them first, and then, once those dates are cleared.
All right, will do.
Okay. And then, at seven-thirty, we had asked the inspectors to come in to talk to us.
Larry is in Hubbardston tonight by demand of Hubbardston's login.
Okay.
So Al's here.
It's only you, so...
Only. Do we have a final copy of what we, the draft, the draft?
There is a copy in the appointment folder, a redline version, right there.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to take a look at it?
Well, I mean, maybe we should get it. A clean copy, want three of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, the secretary? I thought it was a pretty good draft.
I read your...
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty good draft.
Well, seeing as you're the only one here, do you want to change it so it's, you know, she's the assistant only to the plumbing inspector?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay. It pays to show up, you know? Yeah, I thought it was good.
No, I thought the draft was pretty good, and I think it covers the print very well. I guess one of the things they keep talking about is, I know it's not something to do with this, but the computers, I mean, you know, every time I go to use the computer, it doesn't work.
Your computer doesn't work at all?
No, Mary's, that's what we're talking about. Really, yeah, she just lost more emails.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Does it physically not turn on, or it just doesn't?
It turns on, but when I go to warm it, it says, Dad just put my, redid my email, my password and everything, a week ago, gone.
Miss Charter, John Anderson felt towards that, you know, we don't have to lose Charter without an assistant.
I don't want to go in and make changes, you know? That's one of the things, still looking to get my email through the Berlin, for the whole system in Berlin, you know, how do we do that?
Well, that's, I mean, all you need is a... You just need to have Outlook set up.
Right.
And, you know, it's really annoying because it's, as far as productivity goes, this whole situation has dried on for months now, and you have people who don't have emails, who can't use email, who, Mary's lost more emails. This isn't rocket science, I mean...
No, I'll be honest with you, I'm not that good at a computer, so...
Well, you should be able to log in.
I can be able to log in, but you can't, you know, I can log it on my own stuff at home, no problem.
So there aren't really very many changes from what we had, you know?
No, that was, Mary gave me all this...
Data into electronic permitting software, enabling the public to use. And it's used to make applications to the town for inspectional services, that seems to be the big...
I've read it a couple times. Yeah, I thought your comments were good, I mean, I'm satisfied with it.
Yeah, I got a copy from Mary this morning, that was very good.
Okay.
Plus, now, the thing is, the good thing about it says in the back that it can be changed as it's needed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It takes out reference to the fire inspector as another inspector that would be supported by the post. Larry didn't think it belonged in there, and they're not even physically together, so they do their own street numbering, and they do their own inspection, that's kind of a little bit separate.
We can always incorporate it later if it works, so, that's okay with me.
And Larry wanted more clear reference to the fact that the person would be responsible for helping maintain the electronic permitting database.
Yep, I saw that change, yep. Just has had the fire department, the fire inspector voiced any huge interest in this?
Um, I think it was more wait and see, and he'd like to see, you know, after the first year, if there's any opportunity...
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that they didn't think they were in on this, and that we were kicking them out.
No, we talked...
Okay.
When I talked to them last week, they kind of wanted to wait and see.
Yeah, I think so.
How it goes, and then, you know, we make changes.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that what we were doing was in line with people's expectations. All right. I would, I would accept a motion to approve for posting the description of the inspector, a land use clerk, as presented to the Board of Selectmen this evening.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? There you go. Thanks for coming down.
So, so we have a job description now?
I created an add to to put in the paper, which would steer people to the website to see the full description.
Yep.
And also wanted to ask how quickly you wanted to advertise that, immediately?
Well, you're, you, I presume that the inspectors or someone wants to be in on the interviewing.
Right, well, I know Larry wanted to be, and we talked about it, and Larry, you know, Larry's the head inspector, so he should be...
Well, I think, I mean, we're close enough to the new fiscal year that we could chew on. You know, you don't have to...
Take them out to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if you put it in, today's the sixteenth, you want to run it for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah, that makes good sense.
This Friday and next Friday?
Yeah.
You can also put it on...
Cable?
The website, the website, and I think when we were looking for you, we put it on monster.com. Oh, we went through the telegram, and you can also get it put on monster.com through the telegram.
Okay.
I think the MMA, what, the MMA...
Is that free?
No.
No, it's not.
MMA is expensive.
Okay, so not the MMA?
Not unless they just have a...
We're not talking about...
Okay, Yammer's free, though, I could put it up on the Yammer website of like administrators.
That would be good.
Okay. That's fine. All righty.
So you do want to pay for two weeks of the telegram gazette, okay. And then the date for...
Maybe the Clinton item.
Which is the same, so it would also get by Monster? I can ask.
I think so, I think the Clinton item is connected with the telegram, so...
It is, I think it is.
So, why is it telegram?
So I think there might be some kind of rate you could get.
Okay, I put a date of Monday after Fourth of July, I think I wrote right on there, Tom, Monday.
Yes, submit resumes no later than three P.M., Monday, July seventh.
Is that too close, or can you put out further?
No, it sounds good.
No, it'll be out there for...
Well, you're gonna get it in this Friday.
Yep, twenty and twenty-seven.
We can always extend it if we don't have recent resumes.
We're gonna get a hundred resumes.
In my experience, if you put it on monster.com, half of it would be Florida.
No, no, we had a bunch from out of the country.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Yes. Yep.
Too early to think about who you would impale to review as a screening committee, or?
You can do the number thirty.
Thirty, want, schedule that for the thirtieth?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we'd had more inspectors here, we could have discussed that, but...
Yeah.
I will see one of the inspectors tomorrow.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, sure.
We'll talk about that in executive session. Okay. I think we can do the point.
Forty-five years?
Yes, thanks for coming down. And you've seen that email correspond, yep? Okay, so the topic here is the treatment, timing of treatment of playing fields for their annual maintenance.
Is the letter right, the one that called me, Blandon?
Cranford?
No, Cranford.
Okay, hi, just wanted to see you in person, okay.
And anybody, if you wish, I can...
It's a good idea.
You can come up if you wanted to.
Want to close it, okay.
You don't want to become a television personality? Yeah. No, thank you.
So, just a good little background, and then you guys can ask me some questions. Diamond Athletics is who we've had under a contract to treat the front portion of Selkum, it's not the back portion, that is under a separate contract.
So what do you consider the back portion?
To the salt shed from the softball field over in the corner, the newer eleven-on-eleven soccer field is under contract with Rutland Nursery, it's totally, totally separate.
Why are they on a different contract?
Because that's still being paid for by the independent club that is basically leasing that area. Also, the same club that's leasing the front area, playing fields, from us in the spring and fall as well, and providing the thrust of our revenue. But they take care of the preventive maintenance program, seating, treatments in the back, totally on their own. So, the contract with Diamond Athletics, which is, they're on a stove, they work out of a barn down here in West Street, they've been doing this for many years, and this is the contract that we have in place with them for the current year. They have performed the March-April treatment that is listed as the first one there. When they do that, they basically do that when they're on the way back to the barn, so we haven't required of them to give us any kind of scheduling as far as when they can fit that in and do it in the springtime, once the snow is gone. They're totally jammed up, and they just fit in all the work to get caught up as fast as they can. So, all that we ask of them is that they properly flag the field when they've done an application, of which they said this time they did flag it to a minimal amount, I think there may have only been one or two flags down there. In the past, there's usually been probably three, maybe four flags showing that there's been a treatment.
So they put four flags in the entire front field, that's it?
They do four flags along the right-hand side of the driveway, once you enter the driveway, and then by the concierge bow, maybe down by the children's playground. And then if we've had them do anything inside of the baseball area, they'll do something down there as well. It's just the right-hand side of the driveway, we approached about helping out the school with the front lawn and grub treatments in the past, but that is not part of the, part of the contract, so it's just...
And we don't do any treatment of the, of the field in back of the school?
We do not do anything in the past, again, we've tried to work with the janitorial committee as far as seeing what we could do, and that's so heavily used and trotting down. We've talked to them about hair rating and possibly getting in, doing a lime treatment, of which the D.E.P. said, okay, you can do a half of a normal lime treatment, and you need to give us results beforehand and afterhand. It was just gonna be such a roadblock.
That's because it's a public water supply?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, so, so we just basically asked, went through the years, to get soccer to get off of those fields.
Yep.
And when we were hosting Tohato for three or four years, we only put whatever we absolutely had to behind the school, which was the field hockey teams, otherwise we pushed them all over onto the other side of the roadway and... So basically, getting back to what do we put on there, it is an organic product that we use, I had MSDSs on it, this is a product that's commonly used in municipal applications because of, you know, it's more widely accepted, it is an organic product.
Are you talking about the fertilizer?
Correct, correct.
Do you have information on that here?
I do.
All right.
I have an MSDS.
Canadian geese fertilizer pretty good, helps the school.
Can I see the background?
Short of just having Canadian geese, do the only fertilizing possible there, this is as close to one-hundred percent organic as you're gonna get. The manufacturer of this product, if you go to their website, there are hundreds of different fertilizers for all different types of golf course, through private lawns and everything. This is out of their organic class, this is not coming out of an industrial or golf course or anything like that. So we are going with the bottom-of-the-line product, and I will back up five or six years ago, because I know two of you have had kids who have played soccer in town here, and before we had any type of preventive maintenance program going on down there, it was just Mother Nature helping us out. We didn't have very good turf whatsoever, it was very dusty, and dirt, and dead areas and whatnot, so we put the maintenance, preventive maintenance program in place many years ago, and it has helped tremendously with just whatever water Mother Nature will give us down there. There's been organizations that have said, hello, putting in wells and irrigations, but we've never taken that step, and... So we've just stuck with this, but the turf that we have down there is much improved over what we had before we put any type of a program in place, so we definitely wouldn't want to stop with that program. Part of where I think things have gotten a little bit confused is, this is a fertilizer program that is strictly dealing with the organic fertilizer. The letter and conversation have brought into play pesticides and herbicides. Those are a higher level, those do require a different type of posting. If it goes on to a school, there's also notifications for your schools that have to be done. The only type of pesticide application that we look at doing is for grub treatment, which we've seen the front of the school get totally devoured by the pros in years past. School areas in the past, in the summertime, we have done a grub treatment down there, this springtime, there was the potential of having to do it, so they did give us a price to go and do a grub treatment, that we'll get into applying a pesticide like that, we do know that that's a more serious notification. We communicated with baseball because it was just inside of the closed fenced area, we communicated with them, said, hey, it's been recommended, if you're looking for us to do this, we'd need to shut down the fields for a week, or possibly just forty-eight hours, if there's a good heavy soaking rain afterwards, is what the manufacturer's guidelines are for that. They felt that it wasn't a serious enough threat at the time, so we backed off on that.
So you have not applied pesticides?
We have not this season, I did not give the commitment to the person concerned that we would not do that, because there was the possibility we...
Have you done it in the past on those fields?
We have, I do not remember whether it was during the course of the spring sports, or whether we were able to hold off until the summertime.
In past years?
In past years, correct. In past years, also for weed control, we have done a heavy weed control program that has taken place after the school year has taken place. So, in this summer, we do have a soccer club that is coming in to rent the fields for three weeks, that we would, if we were to do such a thing, we would obviously have to work around them if we had to do something like a grub treatment. Again, going back to an organic fertilizer treatment, it is the players, for the most part, kids who are, you know, normal reactions to it, can go back out on it that day.
Well, what percentage of the time of the fields, just, you know, off the top of your head, do we lease out, or leased? I mean, during the course of a year, ten percent of the action on them is from leased?
It's minimal.
Minimal?
Our fields don't get an awful lot of playing time, when I was running soccer and would attend the regional meetings, we were in a unique situation, unlike other towns in the area, where they're just, you know, booking around what daylight hours they have. There's very little traffic on Selkum, so...
Just an aside, but I just...
Yeah, so...
So when you're going to put a pesticide on, you, do you follow all of the, because the school uses those fields, you're under an obligation to follow what the school would have to follow, or tell the school they can't use those fields?
Correct.
I mean, I know...
I was not even aware that the, no, was anybody else on the committee aware that the school was using the fields on a routine basis? We had not been approached and asked, and we told, is Ed Glass is out there? I did get a phone call from Deb Draper about three weeks ago, asking me for a specific date about doing a field day, and, you know, would it be okay to do that? Other than that, had not been informed by the school or administration that the school, is Ed Glass is, was going over there, so...
Traditionally, she's always taking them over there, well, my kids were there, they were...
Well, we haven't heard any, you know, request...
Now, they didn't inform you of it, but it's been kind of an ongoing thing.
Okay, haven't been aware of that, to tell you the truth.
Okay.
So, with that being said... So, with that being said, if we were to know about that, then, or the fertilizer notifications, as I pointed out to the principal, that they do need to make sure that they're watching for that. That is the way that the fields get flagged and notification goes out, is that the flags will be out there.
That's how they're going to be notified? They have to see that the flags are there?
That's the way that they get notified.
Well, I would think that either the person doing it could just drop into the school or send a letter. I mean, I've done the integrated pest management plan when the nursery school was there, and it's pretty strict. I mean, you have to give a notice to the parents before it happens, you have to, and then you have to notify them after.
For fertilizers, no, for pesticides, yes. So, going back to that, if we're looking at Berlin New Soccer and Berlin Baseball using the fields, that we're going to be coordinating with them on when something gets treatment. Berlin Memorial School, like I said, we haven't been notified that they're using it. So, up till now, haven't been calling them up and saying, hey, we're contemplating doing this. Pesticides, yes, schools do need to be notified that pesticide treatment has taken place. And the same is a pesticide.
You have to notify them before it takes place, too?
I haven't read their rules that much. I was informed by the contractor that it was after the application takes place.
Wow.
So, when this issue came up, and I got the phone call at work asking about, you know, why I'm not calling, I think I had made a commitment in the past that we would try to notify people. That can't happen. I just, I can't make that commitment that I'm going to keep a running list and call people from work, so.
Can you just have an email list of notify, you sent one email out?
Well, the problem is every year it's changing through, and to get notified of who the people are that want to be on that list, when we were doing the hosting Tohato, there was somebody from Boylston who wanted to be notified of that and whatnot. So, every year that's going to change. I would rather our communications go back to the head of soccer and the head of baseball and let them know, and then they can coordinate with any players that they may have that are affected by it.
I think that's reasonable, and I think the principal would be the other one, too.
Yeah, just send it to the principal, let the principal take care of it.
The principal and then the head of the teams.
If it happens during the school year, which again, we're trying to put, we are trying to push that off. I didn't make a commitment that we wouldn't do one because we would possibly had to have done a grub treatment this springtime, but otherwise, as a rule of thumb, Diamond does try to do the herbicide treatments and any other pesticide treatments once the school year is done. So, I'm assuming when school is out, there's no need to be notifying those people.
Okay, if I say something?
Could you say something?
Sure, absolutely.
My son is on a 504 plan at school because he's sensitive to chemicals. He is sensitive to this. I understand it's organic. He is sensitive to this, he has had major reactions to it. And for the past two years, there's been one flag when you first drive in the very corner and their car's parked in front of it, and we've missed it, and he's gone out on the field. Years ago, there used to be multiple ones. It was easy to see it, but it hasn't been happening. And I just wanted to say that I understand it's organic, and that's great, but we are, we do have a child that it really is important that we get notified. And so, that's all, that's really what I'm asking for. Push it off till when he's not going to be on it would be ideal, but if that can't happen, I think that in the interest of a child's health, we could make a phone call or send an email.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
And your son is in what, which program?
My son is in soccer.
In soccer?
Yes.
So, if he notified the head of soccer and the head of soccer understood that he had to get that information out to people, that would be okay with you?
As long as it was timely manner, it wasn't like, it happens, we have soccer that afternoon, and I get the email after he's already been on the field. It just would need to, that's why ahead of time is helpful.
And we go back to the fact that these guys quite often are doing the treatment, fitting it in on the way back to Berlin there. So, for, I mean, in the springtime, when I try to get in touch with him about whatever plan we have, I have a miserable time myself getting through. He has one person, that's like a part-time office person, so there's no office person I can call up and say, hey, make sure that when the trucks go out to Berlin on the way back, they'll get it, they'll flag it at that point in time. And it's just, it's a little unreasonable to ask him to notify us two, three days in advance, even the day before, as far as what his schedule is going to be fitting these in, especially in the springtime when they're just flat out.
Really, because I could say, you know, I mean, I'm sure.
What kind of scheduling does he do with?
I'm sure that doing playing fields, you know, that we're not going to be the only ones who are sensitive to this, and there are notification requirements for schools and stuff like that.
For pesticides and herbicides.
If a child is allergic to that, it doesn't make any difference if it's a pesticide. I mean.
So, they, you will get notification ahead of time for pesticides and herbicides?
Correct. We make arrangements for them, and so what we have to do is coordinate with baseball or soccer, can we take the fields down for whatever period of time they estimate?
Once you're past the sprint time and you have the ones that are applied later in the year, is there more opportunity to get advance notice?
Things are much calmer for them in the dead of summertime, correct? There's less treatment than typically done.
I mean, certainly, once they're through the rush, it would be nice to ask them as a matter of client service to do that. I don't understand why we only have one flag. I mean, it seems to me, you know, to have.
I have made the commitment that there will be at least three, no, it was never twenty. It was always three or four, because trust me, when I was running soccer and I was down there doing, looking over the fields, I'd be the one pulling them after they've been down there.
No, I understand that.
Before the highway department came in, three or four flags is usually what is put down around that whole right side of the driveway. Diamond has made the commitment to me that they would do that. I made the commitment to Mrs. Cranford when that gets done, that there will be the three or four flags. I did read through the bulletins that were on this, and it's, you know, saying one flag is required at the entryway along the field area is what the law says. But, so to go down and do three or four flags when you walk onto the field, it's very noticeable. Now, that doesn't mean that the kid is going to get denied access to his athletics that night. The whole left the inside of the driveway that's wide open, down behind the salt shed on the other soccer field, the whole team could move down there. So, if it was last minute and they show up down there, you could just say to the coach, okay, we need to move the practice this evening, the fields were just treated, there is plenty of space to go to down there. It's not like we have to shut it down for the night.
What's the linear footage that covers that, three, those three flags?
Eight, well, turf is eight acres, 350,000 square feet, is what it says on this.
Four hundred yards.
Oh, you're saying along the road?
Twelve, twelve hundred feet.
I guess, I don't understand why, you know, one couldn't be put every 25 yards or so. It just seems to be such a little thing to do.
What are they, just why are stuck in a drum?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand how hard that is.
It's not a big deal till the highway guys go down. When I go down there and stop dinner, my every other week visit, they say, oh, the damn trash and all the flags, and I've got to pull out of there, so.
Oh.
You do notice when it's three or four flags there.
Because they're mowing, they have to pull the flags out?
Oh, I.
Is that what it is?
Yes. I mean, we discussed the trash that's down there, the nets that are flopped, the goals, the water bottles, that's all that stuff that we try to keep.
Yeah, but I mean, that's like, I mean, that's what you deal with. I mean, that's, and, you know, we're certainly willing to help you with that if there are problems with that. But, you know, I guess I don't see why one couldn't be put up every 25 yards.
Or put a flag somewhere where it's noticeable, maybe not in the grass. Is there a post you can stick it in, or?
The beginning of the driveway, we have the rocks along the edge of the field there, so there's never any cars there, has always been, you know, the first indicator that I've noticed that, hey, this is a good place to put it in.
So, how.
I had thought about, you know, maybe we could ask for him to contact Mary, and Mary could put out an email from there. The link is getting Diamond to, you know, that is above and beyond their requirements.
Put it on Facebook. Well, if the Diamond guy isn't willing to tell you, then it's useless.
Especially beforehand, it would be one thing if we asked him, okay, after you've done an application, can you contact us? I mean, there is very little contact on the phone with him. It's, the invoices show up if we have problems, we seek them out, and three or four days later, we get to talk to them on the phone.
So, we're getting some kind of deal on this? Is this why we don't demand that we get better service on this end?
He does very well by the town. I mean, he's done a lot of good above and beyond his contractual obligations for T-ball, baseball areas, treatments. When margins have been tight, he's been very good to us.
Any other comments from people?
I just have one last thing, and I'm not sure if I put this in the email, that's why I wanted to mention it, that whether it's herbicide, pesticide, or simply fertilizer, my son and the gym class that he's in have to be off the field for 10 days. It's probably a higher requirement than would be probably printed on the material. So, that's another reason why it's really important that the school get notified that this has been put down because his gym class can't go out. And it's another reason why it would be helpful if the things were put down outside of the soccer season, maybe not as much for gym, but the soccer season, that would be helpful.
I think that in, needs to be further discussions with the school as well. I mean, you may say that it's clear that everybody knows Fizette is down there. I was not aware of that. I don't drive by during the weekdays and whatnot to see him out there, but, I mean, just as a courtesy, the Lions Club still says once a year to us, hey, can we use the fishing hole, even though we know darn well they're going in there and whatnot? So, I think to know that it is their intent to be out there as compared to just behind the school is something that we should also discuss with the principal. Just met him myself recently, I will have that in a follow-up discussion, discussion with him.
Okay.
So, did want to, am I running too long? I want to take two minutes?
No, it'll take.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in, so you get to raise what you'd like to raise.
You will also notice, we took the old backwoods out of the back, outdoor basketball court area this weekend. That whole basketball tennis court project has been something that we've been waffling on back and forth, that we've wanted to do something for many years. We couldn't decide whether to do a glorified Band-Aid type effects or to do a complete rip it out and put in, you know, a nice basketball court system like they have in Bolton over there. So, we got tired of waffling back and forth. An Eagle Scout project in town, young gentleman stepped forward, said, I wanted to do new backboards. So, between his efforts working with recreation, donations from other groups in town, new backboards are going in, and we are going to be repairing, Band-Aid repair of the basketball court area, taking out asphalt that's currently heaved and cracks that's in there, removing gravel, putting in more asphalt, seal coating properly that seam which hadn't been done before, so therefore the tennis court seams heaved. Black seal coating that whole area, painting the lines on that. We also had a price to do the whole thing right on through the basketball court, I mean, the tennis court area, because people in town would like to see that as well. We're drawing the line right now to, on the basketball courts, to see how the program project turns out, whether or not we're happy with it. Obviously, you pay a little bit more money when they come back for another setups for the tennis courts, also because some of our budgetary reasons were kind of, would be running up against our 10,000 from our revolving account this year by doing that. So, you will be seeing the basketball court improvement, and then we do hope to, if it all works out well, do something over on the tennis court areas as well in short order.
That's great.
Yeah.
So, making a little bit of progress.
Excellent.
Could always use some new members, could always use some new members.
Thank you. Yeah.
To help out. There's a lot of work that could be done, there's a lot of things we've talked about, we need horsepower.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Now, just to reiterate where we are in the others, you said you would have a discussion with the principal?
I will talk to the principal as far as him having the Fizette classes over there. And, you know, when we get into the fall here, as far as what we can work out with him being notified, that is a different level of notification where from a municipal playing field to a school. So, if we draw that into it, there is different notification, we will work with him to see what we can do.
Okay, and then we'll try to get at least a couple more flags.
Tell Keith though, that we told him to put them down.
Absolute, yes, you tell Keith that we told you to put them down.
Those guys continue to be a good resource for us by the way.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Gina, you have anything else you want to say?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Next.
Oh, yes. Sorry, we're running a little bit late. Come on up.
Eight o'clock?
Huh?
Eight o'clock?
Really, 10, 18 o'clock. In selectman time, it's eight o'clock.
It's like, it's like being at the doctor's office or the dentist, if you have an appointment toward the end of the day, you're likely to be delayed if you have one toward the beginning.
This is a very well-run meeting, I couldn't let a selectman's meeting.
So, what can, what can we do for you tonight?
Do you want me to talk?
You can.
So, I don't know if you all remember.
We do?
Email you probably way too long.
How long?
Nope. Okay. So, we, we're dealing with trying to sell the last remaining 40B units, and unfortunately, now the project is in the process of going into foreclosure. So, we're trying to figure out, you know, the best way to work our pathway through on this now. We did go and speak to the zoning board to find out about amending comprehensive permit, and they said that at this point, they can't take any direct action yet. What's the foreclosure, please chime in if I get anything wrong? Then, once the foreclosure goes through, they can go ahead and take action on the rise of the comprehensive permit. But they also said that the LIP agreement would need to be revised. And my understanding is that that's something that's between the Select Board and DHCC. So, we wanted to approach you guys and talk to you about that and see what we need to do in order to work on that process. And I'm not sure which one would have to go first. I think it might be the LIP and then comprehensive.
And I represent, just so you know, the lender, you can tell by how I'm dressed. But their lender is a nonprofit, and I'm not one of the trustees. And our understanding is that we have to foreclose, take possession, that will nullify the existing agreement. The town and DHCC has to enter into a new agreement, and the comprehensive permit has to be changed.
So, the LIP would have to be amended first?
Yeah, that should have to be.
And amended only to adjust the number of reportable units?
I think that's the case, but, yeah. Certainly not an expedited, significant.
Well, no, but I'm, I'm one of the members as well, so, yeah. And, I mean, you reached out to the, we never actually got any answer from DHCC on this. Did he have to reach out to the state senate office, like you had, who exactly?
Flanagan.
But they reached out to DHCC, and they got information for us on, when the foreclosure happens, the LIP agreement, or at least the units that are under, that we have made those sales will be, the LIP agreement will be null and void for them, and then the DHCC and the municipality will enter into a new regular union agreement, current one.
So, do we have to wait until foreclosure to do anything? Sounds like it.
I don't think that you can enter into an agreement until the foreclosure happens.
Okay.
Have you guys wrote a letter? Did you ever get a response from?
No.
No.
It's really hard to get anything out to you.
And that's the difficult part, is because your inventory, what's the term, subsidized housing inventory is affected by all this, right?
So. And we're below the 10% stuff, not, usually, and not badly for a town of our size, but we are, so.
So, I think, but it might make sense to reach out or have somebody, whether it's the town council, I don't know if you have a town administrator or town manager, I don't know your town, reach out to the state and say, hey, this foreclosure is going to happen, we have to amend the agreement. Because we need that to clean up, basically to clean up title for those units.
We can do that.
That would be good.
Do you have any idea when the foreclosure is going to happen?
It will happen in late July. He has noticed to almost everybody in the world.
I'm going to actually be spending anywhere from two to four hours with Joel Bard tomorrow, and we'll talk about that in executive session, but I can have a word with him. and we'll talk about that in executive session, but I can have a word with him, we'll try to get, we're going to be built for this time anyway, because he's going to be in Worcester. I can ask him about this stuff when, when I'm talking to him tomorrow, okay?
He's our council.
He's our town council.
Coffee on the page?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll sort, we'll sort that out, and we'll, in fact, do we have, I know we have contacts for you, do we, should we have contact for you?
Would you like to be, or?
I'm happy to serve in that capacity, that would be helpful, but I don't need to, to muscle my way in if it's not.
It's not muscling, it's, you've done a good job, and, you know, you've seen emails, they go everywhere.
Okay, yeah, just so when we get word on that, we know who to pass it along to.
This is the reply we got from the DHCC.
I'm a couple copies of that, too.
Okay.
With emphasis, if you want.
Let you get the same one.
This was important to us, Virginia, right?
No, I don't think it is. At that point, we're still trying to figure out, you know, what was going on.
Towards the bottom.
Yeah, I'm reading it, yep.
It talks about section fifteen A.
And I do have a question out through the senator's office to DHCD, try to get a little clarification, because it did look like there was some contradictory directions in the response that we got from DHCD, I have their back, yeah. You know, it says at one point that there's no, no action needed, and then it says you have to renegotiate contracts.
Well, it says the agreement terminates by foreclosure, which would mean.
I think that just happens.
I think that happens, but I, I think then your, your inventory is.
Down three.
Down, yeah, well, actually, it's not down three, the rest of them theoretically probably be off the inventory until you amend them.
Yeah, that's why you want to.
I know, I know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Drop like fourteen, because you don't have one.
Yeah. I will, I will chat, if I opt to this copy with me tomorrow and chat with Joel about it. Okay?
After that, we have to go after the comprehensive permit.
Yep, so it's back to. But they were, I think that it's just a matter of getting through the hours.
That means a filing, right, public notice and all that?
Yeah, which is part of the reason why they suggested we come to you sooner rather than later, so we could try to start getting the schedule and the works for all of that, to try to have it happen after.
I'm sorry, what did they?
They're going to have to do the public hearing, their public notice.
CBA.
Right.
Oh, yes, CBA, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking, I thought you were talking to DHCD, and I'm thinking, what? All right, okay.
So, you're gonna talk to Joel tomorrow?
We'll talk to Joel tomorrow about that, and so we'll get, we'll get some guidance on that, and we will transmit it to you. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's happening to the guy about the fertilizer?
That's right.
That's the end of, I did, I did see, I mean, I, I really can't see difficulty in getting the notifications out, but I have so much respect for the word, Bob does, and I really keep trying to indicate how difficult it is, I wouldn't have gone and given some flags up that calling the principal.
Just call the principal.
Yeah.
Or call.
No, and I think that's what we, and we decided we'd get more flags and you call the principals.
Bob Diamond has his cell phone on him all the time, he could run right again, call the principal and get that notice out.
Yep.
He's very easy to get on.
Okay, back to the, the main event here. Approval of six hundred one dollars and sixty-four cents fiscal year fifteen motor vehicle excise tax refund.
Can't be fifteen, because that hasn't happened yet.
No, sorry, I was just reading what was sent here. You're right.
It does say fifteen.
My bad.
You're time traveling.
Yes.
Four.
Actually, I had it myself.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have approval of some bills, town hall revolving account, charter Peterson Oil and Marlboro Pest Control, a total of four hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have selectmen's expense.
Oh, it's just me.
Packing tape, and the amount of three dollars.
I don't know, that's pretty crazy.
Justification for that?
I'm moving out.
You're moving out?
I'm packing out.
I'd take a motion to approve, so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did you sign it?
Yes.
This is perhaps forward number nine, but it's just taken in conjunction with ten. Ten is, June needs a list of everyone's salaries, so that she can prepare for payroll for the new fiscal year, and the only step merit review that you hadn't done was for me, which was going to be done in March. So.
Okay.
Now that, now that it's prepared, but there's a form there. Doesn't have to be done now.
We normally, we normally do them on a Saturday morning.
They were all done on a Saturday morning, December ninth, but, but for mine, because at that time, I was only four months on the job.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if I have to devote a Saturday morning to this, I'm not going to be in a very good sense of humor, I'll tell you that.
You just need some donuts and coffee. That's what Saturday morning meetings.
I can bring you donuts and coffee. Um, anyhow, just food for thought, because the next item is ten, and that is actually signing off on what the, everyone's grading step is for the next year.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be done this week, but June, since you're not meeting again until the thirtieth.
Okay.
Well, we typically meet as personnel.
Right.
Yes.
Well, we'd have to meet as selectmen, because we'd have to do the form and then meet as personnel to approve it.
Yeah, we generally just.
Post vote.
Meet and approve it. And when, we need to, she needs to really know that this.
You could do everyone but that.
No, I understand, I understand. I, I would be.
If that's helpful.
I don't think it would take us more than fifteen or twenty minutes to do it.
Oh, I, I don't think, I, I was, I was thinking that we might get consensus on a step raise, and then we can do the review when we do the review. I would be willing to put a motion on the floor to approve a step raise.
No, you know, well, do we have a step raise in the budget?
Yes, it is budgeted, but it was just not, it's not.
Okay, okay, just curious that we put it in there.
Why can't we do the review at one of our regularly scheduled meetings?
We can.
We can, all I was saying was, I mean, my, again, my sense is that we're all pretty pleased with what Mary has done, in order to get the, keep the administrative stuff going in terms of updating the payroll. And not have to have June do it twice. If we had agreement that we were going to give her a step raise and the, you know, and the cost of living adjustment, we could just have that vote, and then it's, then at some point, it's frankly, I'd rather not do the cameras running and all that, you know, we could do the review. So, that was, that was all I was suggesting. Okay?
I can leave the room with the camera?
No, it's just a little bit bizarre.
It is bizarre, but I don't know any other way to get it, get it rolling.
Well, I think we're, you know, we've gotten to the point where we're, you know, we're, we're, we're close to doing it, and I, I mean, we all, I think, have a pretty good sense for her performance, so, anyway, I would, I think I actually put a motion on the floor.
There.
On second.
Yep.
Well, I think you need to say what you're doing.
Okay, so we are moving from grade eight, step six, to grade eight, step seven, and that would increase the hourly rate in fiscal year fifteen, from twenty-five forty-three to twenty-six dollars.
Twenty-five eighteen.
Those are.
No, no, I said in fiscal year fifteen, it would increase it from twenty-five forty-three to twenty-six per hour. There's also an increase that was built in there from twenty-five eighteen to twenty-five forty-three, which is the cost of living adjustment. Okay, okay. Yep.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So then this would be a clean copy of all of the salaries, I had it either way, just, you know, not to be cute, I had both.
No, that's good.
So.
All right, so this is the one that we do.
All right, that would be, that would be everybody.
Okay, and then.
Now, the reason why, there's some asterisks near the salaries are, if it increased by more than one percent, it takes a vote of the personnel committee to agree that those elected salaries are going up by those amounts.
You know, we voted these when we approved.
Yeah.
Well, you approved, this is why June says you have to do it, is because, remember how we took the salaries out the bottom of the personnel spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
She says that's the difference. So, you approved a personnel spreadsheet that did not have those boxes at the bottom for all the elected salaries.
But we approved all these salaries.
No, the elected salaries.
Not the elected salaries, that's correct.
We approved the non-elected salaries.
Yeah, well, the only reason we took those boxes off was to, all right, anyway.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they should come back or, or what, I don't.
Next.
Yeah, I don't know, she was happy that they disappeared.
Okay. All right, so these are really all actions that we have taken before in one step or another through the budget process.
As personnel committee on the.
And through the personnel committees.
Yeah, she needs one, I guess Peggy traditionally does this, and I've never seen. There are, there's a history of these in the computer.
All right, so I would make a motion.
Not that we sign them, though, but I thought.
I would make a motion to approve the current step and level for town employees for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, as presented to the selectmen, board of selectmen's, even.
You making a motion or accepting a motion?
I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye. Yeah, to be neat. So, we still need to do this at some point.
We, we do.
The actual evaluation?
Yes.
Would you like me to send you something, or?
So you're saying we're gonna.
Self-audite myself as well?
Maybe a little bit, or by Saturday morning?
No, you don't literally have to do it Saturday morning.
We could do it any other night of the week.
Sure. All right, yeah, that'd be better for me.
Okay.
Do you want to set a date? While we're at it?
Put it off.
We should set a date, because otherwise, we're just gonna, it's gonna filter off as the unfinished business.
I don't mind doing, I don't, I wouldn't mind meeting quickly, I think even next Monday night to do it.
Oh, that's true.
This, this week is very, this week is, is, is tough for me.
Want us to add early, or just?
Uh, it's hard for me to start much before six-thirty. I could probably do six-thirty.
Don't make any difference to me.
Here.
Yeah, open, it's an open meeting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll post it.
But we could, you don't have to come down, we can take a long minute on that.
You don't have to be here.
Don't be here.
Nope.
Because we're not going to have an agenda besides this.
They're going to have the camera together.
No, we don't.
Well, it is open, they technically.
If they want to, I mean, you know, I, this is, that's the only thing on the agenda.
Gotcha, okay, one issue. Will do.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, there's one issue.
Okay.
So, next Monday at?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Twenty-third or six-thirty.
Okay.
And I'm sure I'll get ten emails from you, but we now and then, I have Mary, so I won't forget.
You were lucky today, the email was down.
I know it, I wondered if you were in work either.
It was down again today?
Very, yeah, very troublesome day today, technology-wise.
Okeydoke.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the public safety study scope, and we have some feedback from the three chiefs and the board of fire engineers.
Okay, and was it, is it something that's going to change, or, oh, excuse me?
I didn't want to presumptively start weaving that into your scope duty, but some of it, I think, does, is already in scope.
Well, and I mean, I think we need to discuss if we think it should be in it.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, you want to go, you want to go through them?
Yeah, I would like to get this done.
Can we make copies of that for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like to get this done and move it along.
Well, I think, what do you, I have copies of everything that you've seen here, so what are we making copies of?
Just the, um.
I'll be right back.
Well, she's making the copies.
What would you, what would you like, all the responses?
Yeah, I just need, I have my original.
Fire.
I have fire.
Yeah, I looked at them online, so I didn't have a copy.
I, all I have is fire.
Okay, let me just, I'll make them.
We had a couple things, we had a single page from the fire chief, and then we had something from the bulk, the engineers, and then we had this tone here, borough and fire, all this several page thing.
From the police chief?
No, that was from the fire department, that was one of the first things, we've got two or three things.
Oh, this was, this was from the first meeting we had, when we had all the chiefs in, and we were talking about what we were going to, what we wanted to do.
And asked them to each send us, yeah, answer a few questions.
Yeah, yeah, that's what that's from.
So, it's basically the two chiefs, and then he basically agreed with what they said.
Yeah.
Everyone can look at the same, order at the same time. And, actually, I should probably make a copy of your scope. Does everybody have the scope of the study?
Yeah, you have it.
I, I have mine.
You have yours.
Richard Brady from MRI, one of the two firms you met with, just sent an email today asking on the status of this.
Mm-hmm.
It's in progress.
Yeah, I told him. He has to be copied whenever you guys go out to bed.
Mm-hmm. Well, the input is, is short enough that I thought we could start with one and, what I can do is marking from one copy if there's anything we wanna insert. I'll do insert A and then put it right into this and then we can give the whole file to Mary, okay? That make sense?
Well, I mean, I went through the fire department from the chief and there were four things in it.
Alright, so we'll start.
With this, with the fire chief one.
June, second.
Okay, I got this.
Page three of your little packet here.
This, this is the packet?
Yep.
June, second, alright.
So what I highlighted was the concept of privatizing or contracting some services.
Mm-hmm.
To be comprehensive, the town might even want to explore privatization or contracting of some services. So it's privatize, the, these were just the four things, big things. Cross-training, which I think we talked about. Cross-training personnel.
Yeah, Chief Galvin talked about that too.
Yeah. Um, privatizing.
No, no, but, okay. We're, the thing we should be comparing to is, is Judy's. So if it's not in Judy's, I don't care if it's in Galvin's or whatever, I mean, we're across the region.
We don't have private, privatizing in this one. Although, you could say, um-
Any other possibilities, including privatization? So you say cost estimate for town, stay as is, combine fire and rescue, work with neighboring towns as a regional department, or through intermunicipal agreements, any other possibilities, including privatization?
Yeah.
Or contracting of services.
Under cost estimate for town, right here, it lists the four things. Stay.
This, I don't see privatization.
No, that's what, that's in the letter, so do we wanna add that in?
Yes, yeah, and again, let's just talk about what's in here, what we wanna put in here. And, okay, so privatization first, do we want one, do we wanna put it in as a possibility?
I think that's fire wrote.
Well, I mean, here's, here's what I think, I think, I think we should put it, because of course, we already have some measure of privatization because of ambulance, okay? So I think we, we, you know, we should say municipal, you know-
Other possibilities, including?
Yeah, including-
Well, privatization, contractor, we've done it, isn't it, why would you say contracting?
Sorry, where, where do you see contracting?
Says privatization or contracting.
Okay. We're working from-
Do you wanna add that to that?
That's right, so when we talk about adding things, we're talking about what we're adding here.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And so, what we're talking about is working with neighboring towns, the regional department, through municipal, you know, agreements. And I think what we wanna say, and, you know, possibilities-
Of contracting.
Of, you know, contracting with commercial providers, how's that? Okay?
Good to me.
Yep. Alright, so that's that, okay? Working through that, and what's the other thing from the chiefs?
Um, they want, he says he wants to look at a time span greater than, greater than what was in here for five to ten years. Now, there's two points in this where I put a time span. In the first paragraph, it says in the second sentence, for immediate and five, ten-year time span.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the bottom part, it says how will increased commercial growth affect services in the next one to four years? So I think, I guess we should, they should kind of coordinate between each other.
Well. Yep, so we should say in immediate and the next five, ten years.
Ten years, so repeat this.
Okay, so we'll model this, okay?
Yep.
In, so we say in the, in the next year, right, because that's basically immediate in the second one, right? In the next year, and a five-year and ten-year benchmark, okay? Fair enough?
Yep.
Alright, so that's that. Okay.
So this is, I think, a discussion point. It says, finally, when examining services, we may want to examine any benefits from increasing services, for example, paramedic. So, right now, we provide BLS, basic life support, and when it's anything beyond that, and we, we call someone in. I presume that's what they're talking about for paramedics, the ALS service includes paramedics?
Well, maybe one thing that we should say is something along the line of, at least, comment on provision of additional services, you know, possible impacts of Affordable Care Act, how about that?
Yes.
Okay?
That covers the second part of his, with that home service setting and stuff.
Alright, so why don't we put that, it says identify options, evaluate options. That's the second point, and this, why don't I add a point right after that to say, you know, comment on developing trends for provision of additional services, including Affordable Care Act impacts, how's that? Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and we'll put that in right after that, identify and evaluate, okay?
Yep. So I thought that pretty much took care of the chiefs.
Okay.
The cross-training of personnel.
Um, yeah, the cross-training of personnel was-
Yeah.
I thought that was in here somewhere though.
Okay. Why don't we say, it said identify any current deficiencies, as well as areas to improve efficiency of service, and then why do we say include? Analysis-
Opportunities for cross-training.
Yeah, yeah, opportunities for cross-training of personnel, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Okay.
So the fire engineers. I thought the first comment they made, we pretty much covered.
Yep. Current staffing, yep. I mean, it does, yeah.
I mean, in two places.
Yeah, it really is, it really very closely parallels the first paragraph in yours, Judy, this one.
Yeah, and, and also analysis of current reporting methodology as well. And then the capital plan, we have include facilities, fleet, equipment, staffing levels, calls for service training. So they're gonna go through the, the fleet.
Yep, so we should say maybe including review of current capital plan, huh?
Sure.
Okay. So that's-
Where are you adding that?
Uh, that-
And this one again?
Yeah, including facilities, and, yeah, okay? Alright.
Now, I don't know that number three, my presumption is from reading some of their stuff, that they always include the community, but they have identify major issues, concerns, needs, wants, expectations of the community, while appreciating the specific values and personality of Berlin. I think that's a valid.
Mm-hmm. You know what, why don't we do this?
Community risks, vulnerabilities, and concerns are at the end of the scope.
Community risks, vulnerabilities, and concerns, would that, that would be concerns, needs, wants, and expectations. We could say community risks, vulnerabilities, concerns, and expectations. That pretty much covers it, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And the other thing is, I mean, this sort of background to this, when we actually hire somebody, and we have some initial discussions with them, and we can give people the comments of the chiefs, you know, it's not, it's not like
Yeah, 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 yeah.
These things are gonna disappear.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and they're gonna be talking to them too, so.
Yep. This, this pen's out of ink, just a minute.
Four is considering.
Okay.
So four is, I think, the cost estimate for the town to stay as is, combine, right? Because they talk about regionalizing, consolidating, contracting.
Right. And, yeah, and we already said, had worked with neighboring towns, and, yep.
Review of the current governance of all agencies, I don't know what that means. Governance of all three departments, huh?
Well, that is what the whole review is about, isn't it?
Well, that's looking at the fire engineers, institution.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
I mean, we're talking about, we're gonna review the current fire, police, and rescue organizational staffing structure.
Mm-hmm.
No, now, number five, you're talking, they're actually talking about the governance, like-
Yeah, well, we could add, we could say rescue, we could say governance, we, I don't mind adding governance.
Okay.
Organizational and staffing structure. So we'll add it, right, right? Yeah.
The whole thing is about-
Something we wanna look at, so we'll put governance. Alright, okay?
So number six is about risk or liability, and we have two, the last two one here is community risks, and then most cost-efficient structure while minimizing risk.
Mm-hmm.
How's that?
And then review the current dispatch.
Yeah, I think, um-
That goes under police.
Right, work with neighboring towns as a regional department or through intermunicipal agreements. That's your cost estimates for the town.
Well, we already have, we're part of a regionalized-
Study.
Study already for dispatch.
Why don't we do this, where we say police in the first paragraph? Why don't we just say parentheses, including dispatch?
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
And then all we have is the police chief.
Yep.
And rescue.
Oh, yeah, do we have a rescue comment?
Yeah. Couple lines.
Oh, alright. Okay, so let's do the police chief's statement.
Well, he's got cross-training, we talked about that.
Yep.
He's talking about the split between full-time and part-time employees, develop a plan to maintain that balance.
Yeah, and that's a real issue. That's a real issue, particularly, you know, in, in the police, because we have an unusual organization in that regard.
Well, we do say in the first paragraph, staffing structure.
Yep.
Which part of this are you looking at right now?
We're looking at the police.
Which paragraph?
Uh-
Second.
The second one.
Second paragraph.
Second sentence, second paragraph.
Determine the proper balance of full-time versus part-time employees.
That is the first paragraph of the scope.
Well, that is sort of staffing structure.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think we can leave it as staffing structure, keeping in mind that when we hire someone, they're gonna get these letters from the chiefs.
Yeah, yeah. The current emergency radio system, so that would be under-
Facilities.
Facilities, uh, facilities, fleet, and equipment.
Mm-hmm.
The last point, he's talked to me quite a bit about, and actually Dennis Farabee too, about how the building would operate in the absence of dispatch being here twenty-four-seven.
Mm-hmm.
It's facilities, but it's, it's, well, you know, would you have eyes watching the building?
I, I think that's a, I think that's a fine point, but again, I think that's, we cover it in the scope. They're gonna get this letter, I don't think we need to get that.
No. No, we just never had a chance to discuss it with you about it.
You know, in the weeds and-
And if we're gonna regionalize that, then the study should address that, the regionalization study.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And the, the comments from the rescue chief don't have any-
Yeah, I think, again, that's the issue of facilities, and if we, indeed-
It doesn't really have anything to do with public safety, it's more about highway.
Well, I think what he's suggesting is, if we, if, if when we did the, the, the highway facility,
Mm-hmm.
we, we had a facility to, you know, bulk buy our own gasoline and so on.
Right, but I don't-
And that, that should be part of the facility studies.
Vehicle maintenance is what he's talking about.
Yeah.
And a mechanic. Share mechanic, I think, too, yeah.
I think, I, I don't, I don't really think that's-
Again, I think, I don't think we need to get that detail here.
No, I don't.
Nope.
No.
But we definitely will, will include these letters when we get into it. So, okay, so I've marked this up.
Uh, do you want me to do it now?
Yeah.
Well, I have a few things I wanna add to it.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, I was looking, as you know, this is a main issue with me, and I've looked at it very closely, but, um, I wanna, I want a good analysis of the reports, both fire and police.
Well, we have analysis of current reporting-
Solomon Pond malls, calls compared to Marlborough reports, best practices and compliance. The re, well, just, if this is what you had in mind, Judy, let me run through this. Review the reports on the house fires, on what do the reports say? And I'm interested particularly on the Solomon Pond malls, compared to what Marlborough says are the same reports. I get a lot of information on that. Statistics, summaries of calls, definitions of the various calls. I mean, I see all these house fires, and I think they're stretching it sometimes. You see things like we needed a ladder truck on seventy-eight calls. Why, I think he absolutely didn't need a ladder truck, he might have needed it because it had certain equipment in it, it could have been in another vehicle or something, but, in other words, you know, creative people can use statistics certain ways, statistics don't lie, but you can be creative in using them. So I really want to look at the last ten years of trends, definition changes, and-
Are you saying this for all three structures, or just for fire?
All three, yeah.
Well, we have analysis of current reporting methodology and reliability of statistical information.
So you-
That's in there.
That covers that, okay.
And again, like I said with these.
Yep.
This is clicking down absolutely another level of detail.
Right.
What we wanna be sure here is that we've got something in the scope-
Yep.
That covers this, and I think what she pointed out does cover it-
Okay.
In, in a broad sense, and then we get into it.
And there's another, you get into the detail.
The, the aspect that isn't in here, or was alluded to a little bit, it's funny how they, I read it in the chief's report, fire chief-
they, I read it in the chief's report, fire chief, but I think we gotta look at the culture of the department, and I'm particularly worried about the fire department. There's a lot of people that would be on it that aren't on it because they don't want, they're not happy with the culture of the department. We need to look at that. We just had, had a real good guy resign here a couple of weeks ago because he was really irate at certain things, he went back on, fortunately for us, and gonna look at it a little bit longer and, and see whether things change on it. If they don't, we may lose him again, but there are, there are a number of people that just won't partake in the fire department in Berlin, ranging in a number of reasons. I think we wanna look at that culture. I mean, I think they failed, if you can't, you know, if you can't inspire and recruit and lead people without turning them off, then you're not, you shouldn't be heading at agency. Of course, if this was the private sector, wouldn't be tolerated. So I think we need to look at the culture, if you will, of the department, rather than just all the details.
Yeah, well, I mean, in addition, yeah.
Climate, climate surveys of all the staff and all the departments.
Say that.
A climate survey, just surveying the people who work within the department for feedback.
Well, I think that's one of the things they did, I would say.
Well, I think, again, I mean, to me, that would sort of fit in with, you know, review and comment on current fire, police, rescue, now we've added governance, organizational, staffing.
Yeah.
Structure, right?
Yeah.
And again, I think that, that's the heading. And then what you're talking about is another, you know, again, it's a click further down in, in detail. Right?
Right.
Okay? Because it, you know, between governance, organization, staffing, I mean, those are the issues you're talking about, right?
Yep.
Okay? And keep that, because that's, again, that would be part of the secondary package that we'll put out. Anything else? Okay. And then people, you know, get a chance to look at this, but.
Would you say that that would capture things like, it'd be interesting what neighboring chiefs think of how the departments run mutual aid, for example?
Well, they are asked to, you know, comment and do analysis on mutual aid.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. I might catch it.
Yep. So I will, so this doesn't get submerged, I'll give you that, okay? And I'll maybe take a copy, so if you need to.
Yes.
If you get into it and can't read any of my writing, you can. Call your lifeline and I'll read it to you.
So do we want to get this written up in some, a form for the request for, for an RFP?
Yes.
And then we'll approve it at the next meeting and.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Send it out?
Yep, and then we'll.
Advertise it?
We'll be doing that right, right at the start line, because it'll be the thirtieth of June.
So if.
Thank you.
All right, so if you have it written up on the thirtieth, then we can approve it, and then we can put it out.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get it, I'll see you tonight.
Well.
Yeah. I'm not gonna read it tonight, so as long as you get it in the next few days.
Yeah, I'm not either.
All righty, then, so that's that.
And that is something that would be going central, the central register, the full boat, because it's thirty thousand dollars?
Yep.
Or do you, you do.
I think it is a full boat, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, next item. Approval of Board of Fire Engineer recommendation to surplus the nineteen ninety-six Pierce cab and chassis, nineteen eighty-two on body aerial and body via municipals dot com.
Well, that's the first time I've heard of that. It'll take a week to think about it.
That's fine, next meeting.
That's fine?
You want some, you want the chief or somebody like that to come in and talk about it?
Yeah, that would be good.
Well.
We're all trying to talk to him.
I went to their meeting, I mean, it's sitting down in Connecticut. And they can't fix it, they can't use it, so he wants.
They want no trade in value, they figured no real trade in value.
So.
Do we have, do we have a written statement?
Is there not one with it yet, there should be a letter in there from the Board of Fire Engineers.
Right.
They may have gotten, sure, they have left the other stuff, just a minute.
I, I told him that, that we should start the bid at salvage value.
Who, who was the inspector that looked at it? Who inspected it and made that determination that it was totally just solid value?
Rest of the.
There's a person who repairs their stuff.
Oh, there it is, sorry, yep.
Let people look up.
Yep, okay. There was a lot of stuff in the various chiefs.
I know.
Okay, yes, we do. You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. Board of Fire Engineers has reviewed the merits of continuing to hold the old ladder truck with the thought that it might be more valuable as a trade-in at the time of bidding on a replacement. The town to date having passed over the issue of replacing the apparatus at two annual town meetings will mean that the existing apparatus will have been sitting for an additional year before another consideration by the town.
Hold on, thank you.
After the review, the fire engineers felt that there was much diminished value in continuing to hold onto the unit. The engineers have voted to declare the apparatus noted above as excess property. It is our advice that the town entertains municiped auction process to dispose of the property, having had good results in the disposal of car one. The vehicle has been on the lot of our apparatus service provider newing on fire equipment and apparatus in North Haven, Connecticut. It should not be moved back here, having been sitting idle for an extended period of time, not having an active DOT safety inspection. And as the aerial ladder component was condemned upon inspection at the time, the unit was removed from service. The engineers had the service provider render the aerial nonusable for future use to avoid any liability to the town as the seller of the equipment. The fire chief will work with select movement to facilitate photographing and listing the apparatus for sale. The service provider has agreed to work cooperatively with anyone wishing to assess the equipment during regular business hours. The current plates will be removed and the registration canceled for.
Well, the bidding process would be a double check, uh, check on that anyway, so if someone comes in and looks at it, bids a big price, we'll know that we shouldn't have gotten rid of it, but, yeah, why don't go for it? Let it go.
And you said something about starting at salvage value?
Well, I mean, if, if you can take it and turn it, you know, however much metal it's got on it, I think that they need to give me a value that at least if you took it to the metal guy and he said, I'll give you two thousand dollars for the metal, right? Isn't that, that's what I consider salvage.
The way you brought it.
Is it possible to go on municiped and see if there's been anything in the past, like six months or a year?
There's tons of fire stuff, but I don't think you're gonna find anything that matches that because it was two different years. So the ladder is a different year than the truck?
No, I understand the ladder's not operating, all I, all I was thinking was if we, just, you know, just looking for an order of magnitude, shancy or something of roughly the same year that was a non-functional ladder truck.
I can look, I mean, they have the history on it and they have what's currently on there.
Okay.
I told them that they need to give me a number.
Well, we can ask them, we can ask them to look for that. If they could find, check municiped and see if they can find a, any, any rough comparables to give us some sense for where to start this.
Is it like a bidding process, or?
Yeah, but there's a history.
Well, I put the, I put the.
But you have to give, you have to give a reserve, or not.
Okay.
And so I think what we're talking is, you know, what.
Yeah.
What do you wanna start at?
We started the car one. They tell you you should start low, so I started car one at five hundred dollars and it sold for sixteen fifty. I just put the mower on for five hundred, and that was Keith's suggestion, and it's up to six fifty, six twenty-five, somewhere in there. And we have a whole nother week on the mower, that closes on the twenty-ninth.
How long would we put the truck on?
I could put it on for a month.
Yeah, do that.
I'll look and see what the other fire trucks are on for.
Yeah, I mean, that's just one that I have, like, sort of no clue in terms of, you want salvage values or something like that, so.
I would imagine that they could take the weight of it and figure out, I mean, they must know what the ladder weighs and, you know, in terms of.
Well, I guess, I guess my point was, you know, maybe a quick scan to see if there was something of roughly that vintage, see what it sold for, and, you know, discount that by a certain amount and give it as a start. I mean, if we have to put it out at a lower price in the second month, it's only been sitting there for a year or so anyway, so. Okay?
I will look at stuff and, and come back on the thirtieth with.
All right.
Something.
Okay. Mr. Egger, you just.
Well, this is one thing, we've been working with the Neil Bertolani that owns the Tyler Farm down there, and the issue is he's looking for ZBA approval on something, and might be able to work it out if he puts a good restrictive, historical restriction on the house, the brick house. And so the question the historical commission had, can they use town council to review the restriction? I would accept motion to that effect.
Sure.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your business.
Well, it appears that this may come to a head in the next two weeks, and we don't have time to.
Yeah, go for it.
Do it otherwise, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I've still never had a really official communication on it, but there's been a little, there've been a couple of phone calls, a little about it, but I haven't seen anything on the piece of paper.
Yeah.
And needless to say, the Board of Appeals is not terribly interested in moving ahead unless they actually see something on paper.
Yeah, yeah.
So if they get it, can get something developed and we can get it reviewed, then maybe they can do something with the Board of Appeals, I don't know.
I'll send Leo a email saying the burden's on him to get the proper people to craft up something good.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I have in my mind to go to the point where you go down camera in hand and do some recording to make sure, you know, to get baseline recording of the condition of it, or somebody, or hire someone to do it.
Yeah, we, we could go down and do some photographs and stuff.
Yeah, or maybe there's a consultant that does that type of thing, and we could have him fund it.
At our meeting last week, Dick Wheeler said that he had been in there, not really recently, but in the last year or so, and he said that, you know, the woodwork and the general historical features were attacked.
Right.
So if we can, I mean, we can, it doesn't have to be a huge document, but something that gives us a, if, if we're to be the policing authority, I have no idea. They can hire somebody, you know, have somebody else be the policing authority, but if they, it's, it's up to them to write the documents.
Yeah.
And then if we're gonna be involved in it, we certainly need to have the review to make sure we aren't setting the town into a, a situation that would be a big problem for us, but, I mean, you have documents of this sort in regard to conservation, but we have never actually had any, I mean, I know that we have them, that they exist for preservation things, I've seen a couple of them, but we have no real experience with them, so we really want council to look at them.
Could you mention it to Joel tomorrow?
I can. Yep.
You're gonna be seeing.
He's meeting with Joel Barra.
Oh, okay.
On council tomorrow.
I can mention that.
This may come up, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This may come up in the next couple of weeks.
I will let him know.
Okay, we just, I just thought we should be prepared.
Yeah. Yep, yep. All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, let's, let's try to move on, because I actually have a nine forty-five call, but let's.
I have something similar to town council, if I'd like to make sure and get it done before you go, so you can bring it up to him.
Yeah, it's, go ahead.
It's somewhat relative to this, there's a situation in town, you're aware of the this tri-town conservation effort, we've got to protect five hundred acres of land to get a million and a half dollars from state block.
Yeah.
Well, we can match that million and a half with money, with donated land, with donated CRs, and use that value to match the state. As a situation where a person who is dying of cancer, we met with her literally on her deathbed, SVT, myself, her husband, and the person who she willed the house to, and made it very clear that she was donating a conservation restriction on two house lots, one on each side of the existing house, plus acreage behind it. Neither SVT nor I can get a response from attorney, from an attorney who was handling it, and we're really, it's been months. So we're concerned that something is fishy going on, I mean, it's just common courtesy to return a phone call. I called him one time, it was by accident, he picked up when I said, oh, oh, I'm in a meeting, I'll call you right back, down went the phone, I've never heard from him again, I've sent him emails, called him up. So what, the question for our town council is, if you have witnesses like myself.
Is there a writing?
Her husband and SVT saying that, this is all verbal, and particularly the husband still agrees, do you think there's anything there that we can stand on?
It's a completely oral, not written.
Completely oral. With three very credible witnesses, and the attorney saying he was going.
He never read Sense, Sensibility.
Yeah.
Not good, huh?
He never read Louis B. Mayer either.
No.
He said, an oral contract ain't worth the paper it's written on. That's, that's a real.
Tough one.
Yeah.
There's a, you know, there's three or four hundred thousand, probably four hundred thousand dollars in value there, matching value that, that's gone, and.
That's a quick consult with town council who would tell you the same thing.
Really? I mean, it's, if, if, if the heirs feel morally bound by that, that's really the approach that you have to go.
Well, apparently they don't, because he, you know, I would think it was the heir that was, well, all right.
It's developable land.
Yeah, yeah.
You might. Again, that's, that's what would, I mean, just my own.
Read.
Read on it would be, it's not legally, you don't have anything that is legally enforceable, but if the heirs feel, you know, morally bound by this express wish, then, you know, they, they have to take steps to affect it.
Okay, well, they clearly don't, and that's, that's what happened, the heir wasn't quite of the same cut of cloth that the deceased was, so we don't, we don't have that.
Well.
You might discuss it with the husband, you said you were going at one time.
I can.
And see what that story is.
Yeah, I can, all right.
You might be able to do something.
Okay.
Okay, that one.
The appointment of Dennis Bartlett as assistant sign officer.
So move.
I, I, you know, Keith is the sign, I mean, he took over Dennis's job, I don't understand why this is even on there.
Okay, why don't we make it clear to Keith then that it's his job?
I haven't seen any signs in town, have you?
Well, I have, right now, there's some signs posted along a bicycle route, and that's fine, I'm in favor of that, but they won't take them down afterwards, they're supposed to get a permit to do it. And there have been other signs, yeah, I've seen them, plastidone telephone poles and stuff.
Should we be asking them to get approval from us for signage, else we should specifically ban them from being able to do it, when we approve the bike events?
Did, did we approve that?
Well, I'm not sure which one we're talking about in particular, but.
We approved two bike events so far.
Bike events, pain in the mass and something else, pain in the mass comes to mind more quickly. Uh, the bike, the cancer, it was a cancer bike race, too. They were, they were gonna put, talk to the police department, and I also copied Keith on that, so that they make sure that everybody's on the same page.
All right.
But maybe they're not being told to, one, not put it up, and, two, if the event's passed, take it down.
Yeah. Well, leave it up, just mention, why don't you just mention it to Keith and, and not make disappointment?
Okay.
And just simply give Keith a heads up on it that if the signs are not legal, they shouldn't be around, you should pick them up.
All right, the next one is Benison, I think we are done with that, I was out, out of the country last week, but I, and nothing else has come in. All right, the next one is Benison. I think we are done with that. I was out, out of the country last week and nothing else has come in.
Well, I've not heard back and Dennis has stopped asking, but I don't know what that means if that says.
Yeah, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll check on him.
There'd be a trumpeting of the arrival of the check if that hadn't arrived.
Huh?
You would hear.
Yeah, yeah, you would hear that. But let me, I'll, I'll give him a call because I thought before I left for London, we were done, but nobody's heard me things. Okay, update status on the proposed River Road West soccer field project?
Uh, I don't know that you cared, but Dennis was asking everybody to answer definitively, are they going to be tax exempt or not? So Diane says they would not be tax exempt.
I don't think it's an issue this season.
All right, you've said too, like.
It's just a proposal right now.
Yeah, I mean, it is just.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a tax.
Either they are or they aren't.
I'm not a tax. You know, I, I don't have enough.
Yep.
I don't think we care until they buy it.
Yeah, I don't know that they're surfacing with any more information either, so dead.
They said they were nonprofit, right?
Yes, they're five oh one C three.
Five oh one C three, okay.
Per their literature.
Yeah, okay.
They don't seem to have facilities elsewhere to see how they operate in other towns. They rent space in other places.
All right, next slide.
Yep.
The Cavell's request to enter town land for septic replacement project.
Yeah, that is something that was believed to be potentially conservation land. And then it turned out not to be conservation land, but still Skip went out there and took a look at the property and wrote a little paragraph recommendation that he thought that the board should allow them to enter this town on land. Provided they stay close to.
So this is not conservation land?
Is not conservation land, but there are wet pieces of this neighboring property.
It's the tax title Connor lot that went to Captiva and these people have actually been mowing part of it for a number of years. And if they were simply to drive equipment across, so that it's the only way they'd get behind their house to replace the septic system.
So it's not the septic, there's no permanent facility, it's just access, pure access.
It's access, yeah.
Okay, I would, I would make a, a motion to allow them temporary access for purposes of preparing their septic system?
Also Skip just recommended that they restore any damage they do to the town on land thirty days after.
Yeah, yeah, I'll ask that.
Yep.
Okay, second?
You moved, you moved it?
I seconded it.
A second, okay.
Andrew.
So we have a motion. They should be told that they, you know, would be required to restore it to its previous condition. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we do have to schedule an appointment with Larry?
Yep, he forwarded that draft contract today.
Okay.
Do you want to set that for your next meeting or, his contract expires at the end of this month?
We, we can continue without a contract, you know, for a few, for a week or two or a month. I don't see that we need to.
We can't do it on Monday, that Monday night. There's too much.
No, we got too much going on.
Yeah.
No.
Maybe the twenty-eighth of July?
July.
Yeah.
And that gives Larry time to.
So he's actually coming the next meeting to talk about contract negotiations. Do you want that moved then to the twentieth of July? See on the, on the calendar?
Are we scheduled?
Yeah, he's scheduled for seven twenty at the next meeting.
No, I think we want to have an executive session.
So take it off the next meeting and then make it executive session.
Yeah, and we'll just continue.
Yeah.
We'll just continue under the same terms for another month or two as we need to.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, we have reports from the food pantry, Berlin Police and Berlin Fire. And then whatever we do, and I will say we do have to do an executive session about a couple of things, so.
We don't have a rescue report?
No.
Maybe you could talk to him about that, since you're the rescue man. Just a summary page.
Oh, you know what? He may have done that preemptively. He may have already done that, actually. Because I think it was in the last meeting as miscellaneous.
Okay.
For, for the prior month.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have given it to you and bundled in with all of this.
Okay. All right, we have a June ninth letter from Spencer Town Administrator and Collaborative Effort. Negative impact of municipal services due to Chapter seventy, seventy-one and seventy-four requirements.
What is seventy, seventy-one and seventy-four?
Well.
Chapter seventy is like, is eight.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
No, that's a local aid education, right? I think they're talking about local aid for education, regional school district budget requirements of seventy-one and Chapter seventy-four obligations to fund out of district vocational tuition and transportation mandates.
Isn't that more?
Cover within a district, huh? I, I think we'll pass this one over for tonight.
Well, I mean, isn't that more the school committee anyway?
It, it all is school related stuff, yes. Okay.
Pass it on to the school committee.
Yeah.
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah. All right, and then we have the approval of DHCD subsidized housing inventory.
Oh, yeah, I gave it to you blank before and now it's filled out. It's just increasing the SHI on Berlin Woods from two. Now it updates to say that we have five completed there. So you can see in the front there, I typed in the whole history of the, right smack in the middle. The building permit number and occupancy permit issued. All five of the permits are actually being attached to that.
Good. All right, so this seems to be correct with respect to Berlin Woods.
An eighty percent AMI adjusted median income.
Okay, and I'm going to suggest unless somebody, something really pops out at somebody.
I can look through these after you leave. I mean, there's a bunch I want to look at.
Okay. All right, so do you want to go back into?
Executive session.
You don't have to guess what I'm going to say. I'm going to say it.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, do we want to go back into public session after executive session is what I was going to say.
Just number A there, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
We said.
Sorry, twenty-one A?
Twenty-one A.
Yeah.
You know, have we put together sort of a whereas, 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 and we think.
No, I could do that.
Can you do that?
Yep, next meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's, it's the twenty-first, it's Saturday.
Oh.
So if you can just do it this week, well, do you agree?
Are you around, able to pop in and sign that?
Give, call, get Eric and get the, the figures. Like, we did one for Denny.
Yeah, I saw that in the file. I saw that in the file.
Yeah, take a look at that one and just so the selectmen thank him for the, yeah, the years that he's put in, you know?
Okay.
I intend to go to it myself.
You can also, he's a fire engineer too, so.
Okay.
Well, I guess he didn't retire from that.
So do you, Mary can craft it up, I mean, you know, and then we'll, we'll take, sign it, have it in here and then maybe the three of us can drop by and sign it.
Yeah, as soon as I get done, I can drop you an email saying it's done, or I sent you a draft. You can look at it.
Yeah, I'm going to.
I was going to go.
Yeah, I'll be out of town Wednesday night until Saturday morning.
Wednesday night to Saturday night, so you need it tomorrow, or Wednesday during the day.
Or Saturday morning.
No, no, I mean, actually, sorry, I'm going to be out of town from, or I could do it first thing Saturday morning.
If it were done and you all approved of the form of that, I could leave it right on the table and whoever, last assign, I could pick it up and bring it there.
Yeah.
If that works.
Yeah, I will be back, you know, Saturday during the morning.
I'd offer to shepherd it, but I.
No, no, that's fine, I just. Okay.
I have a valley every Sunday.
All right. Anything else you, so you're going back to public session afterwards?
I would go through this. I don't know if Walter wants to look at anything else in here, but.
All right.
So you and I will stay after executive session, run through this quickly.
And go through the.
All right. Then I would accept a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Buman, aye.
Dick did aye.
Andrew, aye.
All right, you're back, you're back on.
Okay.
Bill gave me a quick lesson on that.
All right. All right, so we will see you next week.
Okay.
Have fun.
I'm looking forward to it.
We will, two weeks, one week.
Two weeks.
Next week because we're meeting briefly for the.
Well, next Monday we're doing. Walter, you're vice chair. You want to go through this?
All right. There you go. Okay, and then Mary, as we said, Monday, next Monday.
Six thirty, I will not be here.
Okay, retirement party for Duncan Baum. Mary's going to draft something up as quickly as possible.
Yep.
And we'll all get to sign it and I'll pick it up and go Saturday with it. Everybody agrees?
Yep.
National Grid, June third, letter regarding evaluation program efficiency. Dear Judith Buman, you want me to read this through?
I have not seen this letter.
Okay. National Grid in the process evaluating their new construction program, small business program and large retrofit energy efficiency program. The purpose of this evaluation effort is to help suggest our programs to better meet the needs of our customers. As part of this evaluation, we will be talking with customers who participated in this program in 2013. Did you?
Yes, we did. We got money from them.
Great. In the next few weeks, you will be receiving a telephone call to ask about your experience with our program in 2013. And the fact is that were important to your company when deciding to install equipment through our program.
Wait, what? Yes, we're being filmed.
Oh, Judy, I just want you to come in and just do a little feel of the dispatcher.
Calls.
You could hang deep on our side right now.
Well, I, I know it's not, it's either on or.
Oh, no, I didn't know if you knew when I was speaking.
I do. It's either on or off.
It's on.
All right, okay.
It's, it's supposed to take three days to put the new controllers in.
I didn't know that, so I just wanted to show you, so you're aware. I saw you were here, so.
Yep.
Thank you, okay?
We have hired Tetra Tech, a professional research firm.
I hear you.
To help design and conduct a study on our behalf. The survey should take less than fifteen minutes of your time. And you can be assured that National Grid and Tetra Tech will keep all of your answers strictly confidential. No information that could be used to identify the, will be published that provide, no, to identify your business will be published or provided to anyone outside the community. If you have questions about the study, call Tetra Tech's toll free number, one eight blah, 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 and refer your ID number to the top of this letter. So the bottom line, I guess somebody's going to be contacting you and getting some questions.
Do you care if I take this?
No, you probably should.
Since I need my ID number?
Administrative secretary email versus, okay. HVAC town issues.
Yeah, all right, so the HVAC in this part of the building, the rooftop unit is not working. And they took out the board and replaced it and it's not the board. So they're working on that. And over in the police side, they're replacing three of the controllers. So in any case, in both buildings, either the, they can now turn it manually on and they can turn it off. And they can turn the heat on and off. So you'll notice that it's getting a little bit chilly in here right now. So it's being worked on.
So it's being worked on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I watched them running and going up and down the hallway, so.
D, MMPA, June third communications refer unemployment insurance fraud issues.
What's MMPA? Mass?
Municipal personnel.
Personnel, I think.
Oh, this is copies a whole bunch of.
It's all HR directors all saying that there's a lot of unemployment fraud going on right now.
Really?
Yeah, so Dennis has been watching it.
So that's all there is to it, all right. E, Espet Valley RSD, June four memo refer school committee reorganization. That's just a courtesy.
Lynn is, Lynn is the chair.
Okay.
All right, Lynn.
You spoke, munici bid com dot com, June fifth posting for surplus highway more.
That bid will close on June twenty-ninth if anyone wants to bid on it.
Okay, and that's the one that's, you got a hundred fifty bucks more when you asked for already, right?
Yep.
Town Council, June fifth email refer ethics, open meeting law, public records workshop.
Yep, so Joel put out two dates.
I got that.
Yep. September.
Okay.
I've been to three or four of these things in my career. I'm not going to go over this one. H, DOR, DLS, June fifth city and town alert.
Kind of generic.
Thirteen communities sign up. Cap following. Want to take this and read it at home?
What's it about?
Well, thirteen communities sign up a cap. I am pleased to announce.
What's cap?
No, I just put, I just put that in there as generic. It's just like in Oars or SVT.
Taxpayer assistant project. I am pleased to announce that thirteen communities reflecting the diversity of city and towns of Massachusetts have enlisted in our new pilot, pilot. The taxpayer assistant project, cap. These communities will tap into DLS experience and expertise to efficiency and to efficiently and successfully set a timely tax rate in November.
Well.
And then it goes on.
Nope.
Okay. River Fest, just something going on in, to celebrate.
That's a question, isn't it?
Yeah, yep. Something about tuffs.
Just a cat bite.
Cat fight?
Bite. So it's a ten day, ten day quarantine notice for a cat.
Oh, yeah.
So the cat bit someone and they're quarantined?
Yeah, I think it fits somebody at Tuffs.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. J, Treasurer, Administrative Secretary, June ninth emails refer insurance for vacant tax taking homes.
Yeah.
Is that relevant to anything we're doing?
No.
So we don't have any homes we've taken that we need to insure?
One is in the pipeline and Dennis didn't know if the selectmen needed to take action. I said, no, we need to give Maya that information when the tax taking is complete, else there wouldn't be coverage. So he's now been advised. I guess because it's the first one he's ever done. He doesn't know if Eloise did one before that.
Okay.
Building inspector notice.
Vacation, just vacation notice.
Jill office closing, Monday, June sixteenth vacation, June seventeen court, June twentieth vacation. Monday and Tuesday, twenty-third, twenty-fourth vacation, okay. Civilian fire fatality notification for US Fire Administration, June twenty.
Bruce forged this, and so I just put this, just like DLS sending me stuff.
Yeah.
Just FYI.
Don't you have a round file?
I do. It'll go there after you flip through it.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
No more mass works. Not even done with the one that we have.
Well, yeah.
State notice of availability of fourth round of mass. Building inspector, June tenth, DCH, DHCD report, twelve thirteen, single family homes constructed. Let's do that. Feedback on IT concerns, continent treasurer, we've heard about and heard about and heard about. We've got to do something.
We asked departments to send written comments to us, so June has and the treasurer has.
You.
No one else yet in writing. Others say they're going to. And in the meantime, you'll see later in the stack there that there is now a meeting set up for June twenty-fourth at ten thirty in the morning. The data systems coordinator has set up a daytime meeting to hear from people about their concerns in advance of the selectmen's meeting on the thirtieth.
Who is, who wants to?
Richard.
All right, is the, I mean, is anybody going to be at that meeting that is expert and knows how to deal with the issue? Or is it just going to be commiserating?
I, we didn't set the agenda. Richard set the agenda.
I'll go and see what.
I mean, I'm planning on going. I think other people on this floor are planning on going because it's a daytime meeting where you're going to get everybody here. I don't have a good response rate so far on what's going to happen on the thirtieth at eight o'clock at night during a selectman's meeting.
Yeah.
I don't even know if that is a point in stick and stick because.
Okay. P, Treasurer's, June eleventh email regarding local option meal, meals tax.
Will apply to school lunches.
Say that again, Mary? Say that again, Mary.
A local option meal tax that was passed at town meeting will apply to school lunches.
It will. Okay.
Really?
That's what he says.
I thought when I read...
I don't...
Read it online that it...
Can we, um, adjust that at a town meeting vote?
A good question.
exempt them?
I think it's a state.
Good question for town council.
I think it's, it's set by the state, but I'll go look at the, uh, I'm sure Dennis has already looked at it. I'll go look at the state write-up on the meals tax.
Counting June...
Does it exempt a lot of stuff?
Countant, uh, June eleven email regarding pay step...
Yep, you just already did that to my...
Boy, I can use up here. Eighteen seventy town hall, May twenty-fourteen, expenses against income reports.
We should put that in with our, um...
Monthly reports?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put it under there.
New AT&amp;T accountant manager, June eleventh introductory email. You all setting that, Mary?
Yeah.
Big deal.
What do we have, this is the phone manager?
I, yeah, I suspect so, it'd be interesting to see whatever we do with the IT and our phones or the whole nine yards of it, but I don't think we're far away from it. Uh, I would meet with this person, but I don't know if there's anything to discuss yet. In a couple of weeks, we'll know some more.
Um, anyone wanna go to a lip sync performance in the fifth grade as the notice?
Friday.
Clayton Doug in June twelve email regarding evidence of campfire at Suezco. Clayton, yeah, I saw that. It's, uh, you know, they've done, um, they've, they're very cooperative. I was working with them to improve wildlife habitat. They've been in there smashing down growth and invasive species. Uh, DCI, Department of Conservation and Recreation on the Ross site, and, um, I don't know, we'll have to work with Chief Galvin to figure out how to control this trashing of the place. Clayton Doug in June twelve, treasurer's, June twelve emailed to Noreya Energy regarding...
This is Riverbridge Shell, there was a time when Diane went down and got a chef salad, and they, they were collecting the full, actually, I think it was even more than seven percent tax at that time. So this was a couple of months ago. He wants Matt Sutney to look into it, and also the, the bookkeepers at Noreya to make sure that they're only collecting the appropriate seven percent.
Okay. So it's being taken care of, right?
He looked into.
Good. Rentham Historical Commission need you for a little Berlin historic reference. Rentham?
Yeah, Rentham Historical Commission found some old pictures, and Barry said, yep, we'd be interested in them.
Rentham found pictures from Berlin?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had, I had a bunch of, uh, stuff from Harwick, Mass, and I sent it to the town clerk, and a package came out of Danny Tyler's house when I was working down there. They were happy to get it. MMA constellation energy seminar scheduled.
They gave a copy of that to Diane, but I don't know. Lee, Essex, Charlton, and Algarve.
There's an OR newsletter I'll take home and read, bedtime reading. Berlin Fire Department, June six memo, volunteer fire assistant grant application.
So they're letting you know that they put in for that grant, but if awarded the grant, the town would match fifty percent. So if it's a four thousand dollar purchase of brush fire gear, yeah.
So we have a, a warrant that sits there that has grant. It's specifically for matching grant.
Okay.
Since Mass Regional Planning Commission, June eleventh letter referring energy services partnership with Hampshire Council.
I will take that one, because Eloise and I went to a seminar put on by Hampshire, and they're pretty impressive.
Really?
Yeah. They aggregate.
So how would you, um, describe Berlin's energy uses as a community, not the private sector? We, you've been doing a lot of work on it, what, how far towards the goal are we?
You mean the green communities part?
Yeah.
Um, well, I, I was talking to Eloise that we close out at the end of June, and so by the middle of July, we should have all of our electrical... They automatically post the electrical usage to this, um, Mass Energy Insight, and I'll get the oil usage from June. So by the end of July, we should have a good idea of what we did or didn't save.
You can compare that, like, to Green Days and know what you did over...
It's all on this Mass Energy Insight program, so...
Wow, great. Okay. Building inspected, June letter to Berlin Auto Parts, storage building application. Application for storage referred, uh, after researching, oh, we read this last time in the meeting.
Did you?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, this was a Quonset hut.
Yeah, after researching the Berlin zoning violation response to your application for a forty by fifty single-level Quonset hut metal building, it is my opinion you will need a special permit from the zoning board of the field before the building permit can be issued. Okay? Paste, uh, opinion based on following facts, Berlin Auto Parts is located in a residential agricultural zone. Number two, disused class-three auto junkyard and metals recycling are pre-existing non-conforming.
He said he was gonna run that past Tom before he finalized that, I never heard if he did.
So, what are you saying?
Well, I'll just put the letter in there.
Yeah, just keep it there.
Copy, June eleventh, Fi- Finance Committee, RFT approval.
For town council, seven thousand more for town council.
Uh, Fire Chief, June, a letter regarding personal leave, the June fourteenth to the twentieth?
Oh, yes, this week, yeah.
Treasurer, June thirty, email regarding Gatesbarn Road tax-taking. Property has been awarded to the town by Land Court, and it's currently town Berlin property. I'm not sure what sort of delay Helen is looking for, since the next step would be to sell the land, and that is not something immediately on the calendar. Helen has had a, had multiple lawyers try to res- resolve this and has been unable to come up with the funds to pay the back taxes. She has a history of making, has a history of making promises, okay, I'm, I, I'm familiar with this. Do you need any, I won't...
Yep.
Notice of, uh, possible exposure to rabies.
Where's that?
Wound unknown origin.
That one's kinda hard to decipher.
Is that on a dog or a pet?
It's a cat, it's, oh, I don't know, that one's a dog embroiled, I think.
Permit to...
No, I just copied, I copied to the Board of Health and the, and the...
Expensive, I see the wound of unknown origin suspected caused by another animal.
On the domestic breed listed below, which is...
Senior, Amy Regaro on Berlin Mass Oscar. Color, animal name, city house telephone, Berlin Road Mass, that was a dog-cat breed. I can't read the writing, it's, uh...
So somebody's pet up bit by...
Little dog.
An unknown thing, and they're...
Yeah.
Waiting to see if it's a rabbit?
Mm-hmm.
June sixteenth, uh...
I forwarded that to one to you, right?
Yeah, I, I read it, and I think what you found out, Julie, you...
Like, yeah, really?
I only read the first two paragraphs, that's it, you know? But I gotta tell you that, um, it was kind of a coincidence, not two hours before I read that, I was having coffee in a store, and, and this fellow stops in every day, he was a banker with, um, Clinton Savings Bank, and he's been stopped by our friend, and, um, he was complaining again of, uh, the, the nuisance and the problems that's been caused to a lot of people, just, I hear gripes all the time, but certainly that guy doesn't have the, I wouldn't wanna follow through with...
No.
But just something to keep in mind. I don't think that it's a good fit there, June complaint. June sixteenth request for a report refer June Lyman Road incident.
That was the debt collapse.
That's when the debt collapsed, and somebody broke their back.
Really?
Yeah.
Somebody changed counsel, and they're looking for...
Wow.
The incident report.
Lyman Road, Berlin, maybe the...
It's a rental, somebody rents it, it's, um, owned by somebody who owns a lot of other houses, apparently, in that area.
Point of it's, oh, I wanna say a name. Okay, HH, um, data systems coordinator's invitation to attend data system forum with agenda. Assess the, assess her administrative...
Well, Diane was asking the entire population whether or not people ought to just not go to that meeting and come to the selectman's meeting instead. So I'm not sure what's going on.
Well, I'll be at the selectman's meeting or something. Accountant, uh, June sixteen mail to Duhanos Superintendent regarding error in FY fifteen assessment letter.
What was the error?
Four hundred thousand dollars.
In our favor or their favor?
Their favor.
From the school committee.
She says she won't pay it unless they fix the assessment letter.
Did she get a reply yet?
Not that I know of. That didn't come directly from her, that came from Dennis passing it on to me. That was today.
So it's a technicality.
Well, you'd like to hope that they're not... They hope so, because if it's more than that, they can't get it, because the town voted a set amount. You'd have to have another town meeting.
You know, on, um, the, who is the Republican candidate or rep, um...
Brad Wyatt.
Wyatt, yeah, he stopped by the other day, and he mentioned a couple of things. I'd never thought of it this way on school reimbursement, with the average student state reimbursements, forty-eight hundred dollars statewide, and we are twenty-two hundred, according to him, and Boyleston is at eighteen hundred, I guess. And, uh, it's based on average per capita income, of course. And, but, so all you need is two or three millionaires in the town to throw your way off on that thing. So, and then he was saying that people think, well, we want these big expensive houses to pay their way so we can tax them, but it counters, cancels out if the average income goes up in our state aid.
Well, it's not just income that's on that, it's a huge calculation, it also includes, like, the malls and stuff, so the more development we get and the...
Right, right.
The, the less state aid we get, and that formula they have is, is so old and so archaic that...
It's the same thing we had in the seventies, and we were fighting it in the legislature. Harvard, you get a big benefit out of that.
Well, I think they might have gotten it, because they had Devens, right?
Right. But now, I don't, because all the, everybody that was in Devens lived in Harvard, though the kids went to school in Air, so Harvard got...
Now it's the reverse, they all go to Harvard.
Yeah, all this, um, well, maybe, I don't know if they do now, but, uh, of course, everybody's low income, and it was a lot of numbers, and it brought the average income down, and Harvard was...
A lot of that housing has been demoed, and now...
Has it been?
Yeah, now it's single-family officer songs.
I'm, I'm talking nineteen eighty.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, I lived there then too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well... So do we have any other business?
Well, not that I care to go over tonight. I wanna look at the old business stuff, town council opinion, earthworks permit that that Tolman property groundwater concerns, remote participation for municipal boards and committees, uh, appointment...
Appointment of electrical inspector.
We do need to come and decide on a fee schedule for the electrical inspector and get that out.
Yep.
And we know we have problems with technical... For the...
Technology is technical.
Data systems.
Yeah.
Those coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
So you're gonna attend the meeting, do you know about this stuff technically?
Hmm, I used to teach.
Used to teach that?
Programming and...
Is that right, well?
I mean, I have some understanding, but I don't quite understa- I, I think I'd like to know, I have some questions on how the whole thing is set up.
Yeah.
So...
All right, I will, um, entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I second that.
All in favor, say, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.